All right, Jess.
They get the A C fixed in here, did they? I just said, all right. Always spectacular, as always.
It wasn't there.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
What's that? Better open the doors. What's that? Not all of Scott right at the front of Brady, just smiling away. But he was smiling. Always. He was sort of. Sort of. I do got a Martin New Marty photo in my contact now. They kind of made it sound like you were actually in the parade. I know, but I always like the unofficial last. Now, everybody says that. Same spot right behind. Probably because I yelled at them boys enough to finally slow down if they finally slowed down. See Bob, anytime you try and make someone happy, someone else is up beside you trying to make someone happy. Where in the world? Amen. Is he in for the game? Look at that. I wasn't, I wasn't there, but. Okay, yeah. And I heard you won the scramble. That's because we weren't there. But he was smiling. Always. He was sort of. Sort of. I do got a Martin New Marty photo in my contact now. They kind of made it sound like you were actually in the parade. Awesome. I know, but I always like the unofficial last. Now, everybody says that. Same spot right behind. Probably because I yelled at them boys enough to finally slow down if they finally slowed down. Danny Horton. See Bob, anytime you try and make someone happy, someone else is up beside you trying to make someone happy. Where in the world? Amen. This is the end for the game. Look at that. I wasn't, I wasn't there, but. Okay, yeah. And I heard you won the scramble. What was that about? That's because we weren't there. What was that about? That's because we weren't there. Jessica, did they get the air workings? It wasn't working Sunday, so. It's a nice enough day, we can just open the windows and the door. A lot of breeze blow. Lovely. You can see the rustling in the trees or the tiny bit out there. All right, here's what I'm thinking about the order, please stand in the pledge. The flag of the United States of America. And that two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for doing that. Roll up, please, Jessica.
Lassiter, Nemechek, Errol, Moody, Richard, arms present.
All righty, moving on to the consent agenda, the purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any items on the consent agenda be removed and placed as the last item under new business to receive full discussion. Such request will automatically be respected. Is there any such request from the public? Any such request from Sam? Any requests from the commission? All righty, I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support. Further discussion? Roll up, please, Jessica.
Errol.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nemechek.
Hi.
Motion's carried.
Moving on to agenda item number four, citizens' comments, if there is anything you would like to speak on, talk about, write a comment on, please come to the podium. This is for anonymous, you know, so you're limited to five minutes. City clerk Jessica will be taking the time. Once that timer goes off, I'm not going to cut you off directly. I'll just ask that you conclude. And wrap up your conclusion.
It's won't be long. Bob Elger, thirty-five First Way. I thought initially there was. There was something on the agenda about a punch list and I would have talked at that point in time. I don't see it tonight. But when you go through that punch list. From top to bottom. That you might, I'm going to point out over in the rain and the sidewalk looks great. Love the sidewalk more so than the stones over there before. I'm not sure there was a lot of prep done when they put the cement in. I think it came up a little bit the last time with respect to hydro seed and hydro seed has kind of washed into the water. But I think if you go over there now after the last rain and then we're supposed to have some rain coming up this weekend, I think the sidewalk is actually sagging now that the water that's kind of washed off the drive over the sidewalk and then down. And pulled some of that, I guess I call it base. Out from underneath that and so it'd be something to look at and. And you know, whoever was the contractor, I don't know that the be this, be the hydro seed people, I don't even know if it be the cement people, but at some point in time. The, the rocks need to be, need to bring in maybe some smaller rocks, they're, they're bigger. And anyway. Just point that out.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. John, you got a note of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Person, eleven, four thirty-seven, Papal Street. I came to the last meeting and asked a couple of questions. Never got a response. You said you were going to check into it. She called and talked to. Stigs, I guess, and they moved the truck, left the trailer and that, but you guys were, I was talking about them like signing. And that using that area as their own signage. It's been there over a month. I mean, either their bread truck, their rock, their black truck, their trailer, their other trailer doesn't have any sticks on it, but still there. The truck was there again before I came to this meeting. Been there every day. Ever since the fourth. And then, and the black truck was there before then. So I'm just curious, are you guys letting them use that for studs or what? You never gave me a response, so I just said, I've asked again. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Steve. All right, John, just so that's not a refeed again, can you make sure that you notate that and we'll. Do some verification on what the ordinances state and what's allowed with the planning and zoning department and we'll go from there with that conversation. Anyone else?
Hi, Mindy Gim, four twenty-one, White Street. I just want to speak about the trimming at the end of the airstrip as it's ready to come forward. I know from talking to several people that there's like a clearance lead way of approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the center of the airstrip to. Where the clearance needs to be and the fence on our property is like one forty-eight. And I'm just asking when you take into mind when you're starting to trim this, that you try to leave as much of the trees as possible and you know, like. Trim what you need to do to follow the law and everything, but if we can avoid. Taking down the necessary trees, you know, that would be, that'd be wonderful when you're. When you're doing that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I ask her a question of understanding?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, you're talking about the West End?
The end right by the bus garage. On White Street, at the end of White Street. I know they're doing that community garden across the street. We're talking about the trees that are right along the airstrip, the fence along the. Or along the housing and the airstrip there.
Okay, so would they actually be if this side?
Yeah, so the fence, the fence that you put up twenty years ago is right, right there. That's what I'm talking about. So if we can avoid. Unnecessary tree removal and just trim, you know, that to that one fifty foot mark instead of going extra, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for public comment? Go ahead, John.
My name is Doran Davis, live at six one five Boeing City Charlotte Way Road, also known as County Road fifty-six. I represent the Davis Family Farm. This is our hundred and second year in business. And we're just still a year younger than Barbara Lumber. They're a hundred and three this year and I take kind of a point of pride that there's two family enterprises here in Boeing that are still operating this long and successfully. Second thing, there's no North Boy and Walmart yet. So I'm not like a greeter, so I call myself the North Boy onlooker and kind of like the observer, which I've been doing since nineteen seventy-six when I taught drivers out up here at the Twin Valley. The Boeing City part of the Twin Valley with the school district that was East Jordan, Boeing City combined. And then they were the only district in Michigan that's ever been allowed to dissolve. They went back to East Jordan and Boeing City. George Chantelus, he showed up July third at my place. I was taking a nap and. He was calling Doran Davis. He was one of my students back in nineteen seventy-six. And I told him, wow, it's like deja vu because he and Johnny. Maythor, they used to ride their steel frame mini bikes up and down the right way over there when it was still dry. They'd holler, hey, Mr. Davis, and I'd be like trying to take an afternoon nap, but we had a good visit. He lives in Melbourne, Florida. He comes up here in the summer, summer and travels all over. He's. Author of a published book and he showed me like a Yuper light stone that he collected and that was interesting and then like an old glass knob off of a dresser. With a black light shows the colors and he also had like a bronze keel, which he explained to me is off like an old Spanish. Loot ship when they're taking all the gold from here and sending it back over to Spain. The next thing I wanted to give a shout out to Doug and Kevin. I appreciate the new curb sign. I know. We didn't agree on the exact thing, but that's what makes people noble, the ability to compromise. So it's really reflective and it's like a, a nice thing. I also trimmed the bottom branches off my birch tree, so there's more visibility. I, I'm still concerned about the speed. Last night before the curfew siren went off. I'm, I'm outside and I'm watching and it's like half the cars coming in from like where that resembles lives. They're going like fifty, sixty miles an hour. And I don't know if there's ever going to be a solution to that because that's been going on for like fifty years. When, when you guys are on the road patrolling, I mean, it must be like people sense that or something because everybody's going like the reasonable speed. But typically in a day. There's probably at least forty percent that are going over the speed limit, some as high as like fifty, sixty miles an hour and it's kind of a safety problem. When I mentioned it last year, you had like a patrol car parked over there. I'm not suggesting that. I mean. I know you go by there a lot and so does the sheriff department, but one thing that was effective, my sister, she's up here now from Virginia. She built a house there and she said you have that. Speed sign central over there. That's effective and it was there most last fall. And I mean, when somebody's really going way over like more than ten over, it just starts flashing the lights and so they should know in their mind that. What they're doing is not right. And then. The last thing I met, knocked over with Mike and Jessica and we talked about stormwater management because Kevin Shepard, he wants to. He said he's willing to work with the city about. Coming up with a solution to all the water that's coming over onto my property. Since the new trail was built and when I spoke with Mike, I'm not. Like what Robert Taylor said one time, he said, I don't believe in kicking a man when he's down. So it's not negative about Mike, but he said he wasn't really willing to work with. Kevin about stormwater management plan, which is like a city ordinance. And so I don't know if the interim city manager, if I might talk to him again. And then the other thing we talked about the West Michigan Water District and what I got was the. Plunkett and Cooney treatment, when I read the news, it's like what you got from, they call it the Boeing Mountain Hydroelectric Plant. Never in the news do they ever mention that that plant was built by the citizens of Boeing City for the people of Boeing City. And it served adequately until after World War Two and everybody started getting refrigeration and air conditioning. And then for some reason they sold it to Consumers Energy, Consumers Energies. They're like going green and solar and. Wind turbines and all that kind of stuff. Now they're getting rid of all the hydroelectric dams. But I thought it would be worth mentioning if, if, if the press ever talks to you about like just mentioning that was like. The city of Boeing City that built that, that dam. So I, I thank you for the opportunity to meet in front of you. I mean, the other thing, when we met with Mike and Jessica, I told her, well, this is a rare opportunity. She got to sit with two Eagle Scouts, like trying to obey the twelve points and scout law. But I was kind of concerned because I'd left a packet with him, a ten page packet and a cover letter that said property Doran Davis and Mike wouldn't have turned that to me. And I don't know if that's still on file here or not, but I'd kind of like to have that packet back for. Future use. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Doran. Appreciate it. Jessica, do you, do you mind just reaching out to Doran and seeing if administratively you guys can repeat that back? Anyone else for public comment? Anything electronically? All right, moving on. To agenda item number five, correspondence. We received four items, three of which are from Consumer Energy. And one from Mary Palmer. Each commissioner receives a property well responded. And one from Mary Palmer, each commissioner received a copy while responding. Any comments, questions, concerns about public comments? I mean, correspondence. All right. Moving on to agenda item number six, city managers report. Take its way, John.
Certainly. Good evening, commissioners. The Boeing City Police, one EMS, uh, State Police was fifty call service in each of the last few weeks. Just a quick update on the holiday weekend, um, very smooth. The calls for EMS was a little bit higher, but nothing related to, there weren't any disturbances or issues related to the holiday activities within the city limits. Uh, so that was great news. Kudos to everybody. And if you noticed. Saturday morning, when you drove around, uh, the DPW did an amazing job that can never even happen. Twelve thousand people plus came and enjoyed. Was community. It was absolutely astonishing, the support and then. Like it never happened. They cleaned up and it, once again, it's gorgeous outside. Uh, so I just want to thank them for that. Uh, there is a, uh, the new iron fluoride plank is in. It's up, the roof is on, it is flowing, the ponds have been balanced, it works great. So the project up there on that hill, that wastewater plant is, uh, going swell. The, the harbor, uh, Commissioner Pritchard, that. Big some paddle did arrive and now we're waiting on a switch. As soon as they receive the switch. Uh, that panel will be instantly, it was ordered at the same time as the panel. So for some reason, uh, it, it, they got separated. The, there's a quote in the package for the E-Doc, so I assume when we get to that, you'll be discussing that. The cleats are installed, that's covered by the contractor. The E stops are installed and the covers are on thanks to the installation of the covers were completed by the, uh. Uh, the chief of police, Chief Spade took care of that for us. What, uh, Avon, Avon Marsh, uh, we do, are, we are withholding. So when I get the total cost, including the covers. Then I'll work through that with Avon Marsh, but that is something that, uh, this commission decided that we should withhold from them for final payment. The riprap that, uh, that Mr. Elser was talking about, yes, I did know that, which is why it's in here. I didn't know, I don't know where he went. Oh, there is. So I, I don't know, uh, I haven't noticed any sagging, but I have met with, uh, with the harbor master and talked about, we should have additional riprap. Because it is kind of a drop there and I have concerns about someone stepping off the sidewalk and we may need a railing or we may just need some. The yellow striping that, that to alert people that there is, that could potentially be a drop if we don't have smaller stones put in there. So that's something that I'm working on as well. The new curb stops are in place, if you haven't noticed, in the parking lot, um. It just came to my attention today when they came and said that they're gonna have to be removed in the winter for plowing. They're bolted in, so we'll talk about the process to unbolt it and, and put them in storage. So. You know, the pot trucks can come through. Either that or they're gonna have to plow. Off of them a little bit and there may be a little bit of snow and ice that's there. So we'll work through that when the winter comes in, which is scheduled for July or August, I think. Uh, then you, the seasonal employees, excellent staff training. I had positive statements from everybody. They thought it was worthwhile. Uh, it was really a catch up on safety measures as well. So that was, that was great. The trees, we have removed the trees per commission's request. And we're pending what the, the credit will be on that project or the harbor. The sister city, we had an outstanding, it was, it was a, uh, with Darren McGowan, we had a, uh. Meeting with him via Zoom. Um, what they're most interested in is not some of the infrastructure items like water sewer. Well, you know, power, what they're really looking at is they want to get information about how our government works, how the democracy works, how. Uh, everything is threaded through, how the commission operates within the township, within the county, within the state. And it was discussed that, um, I did speak with Senator DeMuse's Chief of Staff Dakota. And the senator will, um, wrap a schedule to make sure that he can be a part of that meeting while they're here, whether it's here in. Boeing City or we can schedule something, a meeting at the, at the county, uh, county office in Charlotte. I just received information for a contact information for Representative Parker. So I will reach out tomorrow to find out if I see him with a schedule and see if Senator DeMuse and he can, can, uh. Combine their time to visit at the same time when they're in town. What's on here as well is discussions about. Um, what type of, you know, what are we going to do? What are we going to fund? And this is gonna be a commission discretion in terms of how much we're going to, um, provide housing, food. Uh, we did get, uh, concessions on transportation where someone's gonna donate transportation. So it's more or less housing and, uh, and meals for the group. And I believe that's something later on that you'll be talking about. It is. The, the main street, uh, the executive director, Ingrid, she attended it. Um, the primary topic was historical preservation. Um, I asked her if she has any information, a slide deck, so if there is anything to come, we can put it in the next packet. So you get an understanding idea of what was covered there. The airports, so I had my first airport advisory board meeting. Uh, I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Pritchard was there as well. Um, so I was able to catch up on, uh, a lot of the history that's going on. There's a lot of information here to cover. Um, I do know that the airport advisory board and there's a joint session with the commission on July twenty fourth. So a lot of these topics will be covered. Some of them I think are gonna be, uh, it should be pretty easy. Some I actually found out with plowing, for example, was already been solved. Uh, that, that it was done the way that they're requesting last year. Some of the sticky things. Such as, uh, I think one of the concerns that they have is this. They're not in favor of adding a card reader. And what I suggested to them, because I also met with, uh, Mr. Peterson, who services those pumps, he tracks all the data. He knows what the tank is, he get readings, registers and all that information. Um, so what I told him is. Let's just collect the data. Let's see what the data tells us and we can match the data and I'll have that ready for the July twenty fourth meeting. To know what would it cost to install a reader, which would be installation, charges. Per, you know, per, um, per transaction fee and total that up. I have a pretty good idea of what the labor has been spent, both in the office labor. To track the invoicing for the field and then Mr. Peterson's time as well. And then with the data, this mission could decide, is a reader warranted, is it not, or is there some blended opportunity there? But I think the data will, will help drive your decisions and at least aid you in that decision. The, um, the road end, that, the runway inspection, um. Mr. Wright is actually looking to see if there's somebody that could give us a simple idea of. Uh, how we create that, how we identify what index it zero to one, it's similar to a pager index, it's done for the. Uh, streets, just municipal streets. So what is zero to a hundred, I have no idea where I place ours, but, um, we have been servicing it. It's been serviced through the course of history and at this point it's just been using the, uh, the tar, the filling and the cracks and things with the tar. There's a couple of spaces there, a couple of places rather, along the taxiways. That, uh, I've actually met with our, our road department and they will be providing hot patches to those specific areas. And anything else that's in there was, there was some grass growing up between some of the seams. We're gonna make sure that that's trimmed out. You put a little salt and vinegar on it, it'll take care of the weeds and grass. And that because you don't want it to get to a certain height if you have, uh, a plane with a, oh, you know, low wing, low prop. And even if it takes something like a weed sticking out of the ground, it could be problematic. So that's all being taken care of as well. They, the hot hatch will probably be after Boeing Thunder. Um, we also talked about the trees, any bushes and trees that are on either side. A hundred twenty five feet on other side of the runway and center line, um, to speak to, uh, Ms. Kim. I did speak with Ryan today, just shortly before this meeting, so I will be updating again tomorrow. It is, the plan would be when it gets to that point, there needs to be another time before the commission to evaluate what those costs would be and what those quotes would be. But the plan would be just to thin those out and not have a radical cut line across the, uh, across. There, a lot of that's gonna be driven by the, some of the FAA guidelines, but it looks like from what we've done a cursory study on, that would be acceptable. It's more talking about what's on the other side or the, uh, the deep side of voice over there between. Um, their, their neighbor's house across the street and Brockway. Right now, the commission has approved. One set of, uh, work schedule, which is gonna be accomplished this week. And then what the, the plan will be then to go in and do a review and find out, all right, is there anything else that needs to be brought down on that? Is there anything else to beat FAA standards or is that gonna be the quality cut of that end? And then we can address whatever else is done inside the airport fencing. The airport fencing as well on that, that airport fencing ends at a point. Along the walkway, the pedestrian bike path, walk path, which is basically giving full access to an active runway. So what we did is, um, and this, I just received the quote, so that would be coming on that, on the next meeting or. We're likely presented during the advisory joint session, so we can talk through all of that with any other capital improvements that may be required for the airport. And that can all be done at one time and based on that, we can bring it forward to the next mission meeting. But I do have information on that. Um, the hangar inspections are, are, will be conducted in August. That will be the fire chief, Mr. Wright. And police will be there, um, pending any interruption due to calls of service. And those will be scheduled, those are being scheduled with the advising rather, advising the hangar owners, so they know exactly what date it's gonna be going in there. I skipped around on that a little bit. The Boeing City signs, uh, for the public access and the stakes parking after Boeing Thunder, that will be in place. That was also discussed with, uh, with the road crew, so they will be able to take care of that on the road ends for those. Uh, they. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll be able to, uh, provide pictures that at least say that it's been completed. The planning and zoning, we posted the, we, there's two positions that were posted for the, there's one for the director of planning and zoning and then there's one for associate. It's been posted on, uh, the social media, on Facebook, on. TikTok? I'm not a TikTok user. TikTok, let's say, um, yes.
Instagram.
Instagram, sorry, I told you I wasn't that. Uh, Instagram, the municipal website and we reached out, we placed it on LinkedIn as well. We elected not to put a deadline date on that because we just want. We wanna see what's coming in and as people are looking at the sites and evaluating because of the holidays, I wanna see how much we get. As of, uh, this evening, we have five associate applications and four director applications. I've not gone through any of those yet. They've just been, uh, as they come in, they're putting in a file and next week I should be able to at least spend some time going through them and marking them up. Uh, the master plan, the good news is it's being formatted right now. Kyle can extend the conversation on that if you have questions. The drag race, so we did have a meeting, um, it was. Great, uh, Mr. Kane did show up at the meeting as well to kind of advise on some of the background that went on with that. Mr. Hildebrandt. Is going to be the event coordinator. He's, he's kind of been there, done that, he's got his hands on it. Uh, the race is gonna be the thirty first of August, airport will close at noon on the thirtieth. I met today with Jennifer and we went through a detailed list of. Everything from defining the assets to identifying all the, the volunteers, what their tasks will be, what their responsibilities will be. Um, what placement and assets as well, if there's any other, um. Uh, support opportunities in terms of a light tower or banners or anything like that that we can do, uh, we're evaluating all of those things. The. Just because, you know, the people that have all the knowledge, I'm not a fan of tribal knowledge, so I wanna get this all to paper. So we have standard operating procedures, so in the future, you just pull open the book and say, these are the steps, this is how early you start, these are the contact names. Uh, and we roll from there. So that will be completed after, after this event, but we're building that as we go in anticipation. EMS, fire EMS and police have all been advised and, um, and they'll be updated as plans, uh, fall out. And once we do have, uh, that list and those hard dates, uh, next meeting, we'll have another update for that. But I'm, I'm excited. It should be a, should be a great event. The Heritage Center, I had a meeting with, uh, Michael Lemay and Keisha Fried. Um, they were talking, among other things, they were also talking about some of the historical items that are stored at the DPW. I did go up to the DPW garage, they call it closed storage. And I pulled in with my car and I was immediately, um, surrounded by DPW because they didn't recognize the car. I'm gonna make sure somebody's not in that garage. That is, uh, I'd like to be able to find some storage place for this because some of it is. Uh, there's old wood, there's old materials and the more that, longer that it sits in there, it's very dirty and dusty. You know, it, we could see degradation. I don't know how long it's been in there. Um, I'm seeking guidance on any ideas on maybe where we can store them. It's about a twenty by twenty four footprint. Uh, in terms of floor space, extends out maybe, maybe eight feet. So that's something that I'm looking for some commission guidance on, you know, what I could do with that. Fire Department, Chief, great job of the nineteen seventeen in France. Tire paint, it looks great. It sparkled, it was, it was fantastic. Um, and then also I met with him, the pumper truck. Uh, that RFQ went out, bids will become the bid opening will be July twenty eighth to two P M here in City Hall. Uh, and, and that is a, a public meeting as well for anybody that wants to come. The wooden property, I did, uh, speak with council again and he advised me that he will be, be providing information. Uh, for resolution options in one of the August meetings. He did not pin down a date for me yet. That's just basically a quote from Mr. Cross. The Boeing City acquisition opportunity. So this is something I also spoke to Mr. Cross about. So what I wanna do, this was recommended as the. Kind of the best path, just to bring it to everyone's attention, as, as, it's not a resolution item, it's not an agenda item. Um, if the council, at the council's discretion, you, I can. Reach back out to legal counsel and just say, okay, if this is something that warrants deeper discussion, what would be the process? So it would just be from the commission, I'm just looking for, yes, John. Please ask him what would be the process if we want to discuss this. And if not, then it just, it, it ends on my report.
I'll get your consensus out there.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the Fourth of July weekend. So the way that we've done it on, on the department head is we formed a Fourth of July text thread. With all the appropriate leadership and people that are involved with the management of the Fourth of July. We did that on an email and we did that on a text thread. And with the intent that post-event, which tomorrow we will have a meeting, we, uh, all of us will go through. And know, okay, what went great, what can we improve upon? Did we have any issues? And there were a couple. That now that we've addressed them, they're in it, they're in context and text form for all of us to share. We'll come up for solutions and then we'll know next year again, and SOP plan will be set and we'll know exactly what needs to be done. Uh, that the chief actually made a good point that when there were previous times, it was, let's just do the same as last year. And not everyone remembers the same as last year. I'm not sure that I remember exactly what I did last year at this time. Uh, but that way, if we have a book, people got it, we understand what's going on. We're doing the same thing with Boeing Thunder. Which will then do a recap on Boeing Thunder to again, what was great, what needs work, were there any, uh, primary issues? And then we'll assign the task for corrective action. Uh, but other than that, I, I was, it was absolutely. An incre- incredible event. I, um. I don't appreciate being soaked by the voters on the, oh, race, but it was a hot day. But kudos to the team and to the people of Boeing City. It was truly remarkable. I mean, people of all ages just enjoy themselves and. An- anyway, I just, I, I, I was over the moon on it. I was, yeah, I call my mom and tell her you can't believe how incredible this was. So thank you to everyone. It was a, it was a beautiful Fourth of July parade. So that's it. So. Questions and all of that. I know I just dumped a lot on you, um, so what can I answer with regards to any of that?
All right, thank you, sir. Going to the public comment questions, concerns, agenda item number six. Go ahead, you just have to come to the podium, speak, uh, state your name, address. Uh, yeah, agenda item number six is city managers report.
Um, you talked about the curb, um. Dividers or stops.
Yes.
And.
This is.
I've tripped over the, I'm sorry, I'm Carrie Struman. Rosier Road, Boeing City. Um, when you're parking out there and you're unloading your car because you're trying to get on a boat. The, and there's no car next to you. You easily trip on those curbs. I've tripped on them. My husband's tripped on them. Ralph, the harbor master, has tripped and fallen on them. And then you talked about plowing and what, what a difficulty that might be. I'm wondering if instead of having them on an angle, you take them and put them back along. The grass line, so people obviously still can't drive into the lake or onto the rocks or sidewalk. But they won't have to be moved for plowing and somebody will not get hurt as easily. Um, I'm really afraid somebody's gonna get hurt and it might be me, so I just thought you should know.
Thank you. Any other public comment, questions, concerns? All right, going to the board for deliberation, um. Allow each commissioner to go through questions that they have in regards to John's, uh, city manager's report and then I'm gonna attempt to. Collect a consensus for John and guidance in two areas that he's asked for. I'll just start with the questions and then we'll just keep it rolling. John, in regards to the airport hangars review. The hangar inspections that are being conducted in August, um. When you go through that process, will you be notating aviation related items and non-relate, non-aviation related items stored in those hangars?
I am not aware of the process, but I will find out exactly what the process is for inspection. I know that they're looking for. They're not to be, they're not intended to be used as storage buildings is my understanding. So if it's aviation items, they're also looking. Uh, the fire, the, the chief will be in there to ensure that there are not any, uh, fire hazards that, you know, open containers, slamable items. You know, stored incorrectly in those buildings.
Okay, cuz I have an interest in knowing that information as a city commissioner, especially with the conversations that. Okay, because I have an interest in knowing that information as a city commissioner, especially with the conversations that. Um we're potentially going to be having in the future.
Yes.
I think it's valuable for the city to keep track and understand that.
Very well, yes, sir, I'll collect that.
Um, and then as far as the airport repairs and maintenance, I know we've been talking just before the meeting in regards to the trees, and I want to bring it up again. Because it's not going to be an agenda topic tonight that gets added, but. We really need to understand the financials. So for the last four years, we've pulled. Airport runway is breaking down this way, this needs to be done. Mr. Kane was asked about this, Mr. Kane ain't doing. You know, this and a result in the airport assistant airport manager throwing his hands up in the air and walking away, leaving that commission. Um since the change in leadership, that individuals come back and is now the airport manager himself. Um addressing and communicating a long list of issues that they've been addressing and communicating for four years that I've been here. Um, we really need a financial plan though, and you brought up the C I P and I brought that up to you as well, just before the meeting.
Yes.
There's a laundry list of repairs and issues that we need, just like the Marina over here, but we have no capital improvement forecasting what that expense line looks like. Um so. Prior to this July twenty fourth joint meeting, I think it would be very beneficial if administration can help gather. Here's where that general fund is, that general fund account is currently. Um, these are the current known preventative maintenance and repairs that are really needed. Um, one of the issues that consistently gets brought up is our airport's under provisionable provision. For um because of the condition that is in, um which is eye, eye awakening as well, baffles me why we're in that state. Um but that's valuable information that we need to have to really progress that conversation on July twenty fourth is knowing the numbers. Um instead of just a laundry list that we need X and Y and Z fixed and repaired, um we need some dollar, dollar amounts. Um. Going on the next page into the Boeing City. Well, just before that, the new location for the Boeing Heritage. I just wrote here, this is my note, this has been a topic and an issue since day one when I arrived in the role that I'm in. Um or to this commission, um DPW, from my understanding, I went and toured it when we got elected. The Heritage Center invited us to go tour the DPW facilities. One was the wastewater facility, the other one was a DPW site down here. They allowed me to tour all the artifacts and items that are being stored. Um clearly a disservice to all the families and members of the community that donated those artifacts to the community. They're sitting on the pavement and boxes collecting moisture, they're not stored properly whatsoever. I brought up concerns about it consistently. Um what I was being, and, and what was clear to me is DPW. Is frustrated that they have to navigate around those artifacts when they're trying to do their operational job in their routine. Um they can't functionally use those garage doors and that space functionally with that equipment because of these piles of artifacts that are just sitting there. Um so it's under my impression and assumption that DPW would love to have that stuff out of their way. Um and I've, I've just been confused by where is this ball getting dropped? Whose responsibility is it? And you said that you're looking for guidance from the commission, so I'm going to try and help get us there. That guidance isn't, isn't, is not going to come tonight, obviously. Um we're going to have to take some time and think about it, but. I would like this to be a revolving item that hopefully gets resolved. Um because it's one of those areas that legally we can do better and, and I think it's an easy, low-hanging fruit opportunity for us to do better. Um. Then. And then last thing that points, the Boeing City Fourth of July parade, it sounds like what you're essentially going to create is an after-action report. Can you share that with the city commission after the, when you compile that?
Yes, sir.
Um and then last thing is just a consensus, the Boeing City property acquisition. I'll just say right now, my position, I'm, I'm in full support. I think it's in the best interest of this community to acquire that property and potentially lock it down as public parking in the future. Um I, our neighboring communities that are overloaded with parking meters, I don't ever want to see it happen for Boeing City, so it's in our best interest in exploring that, so. I'd support you furthering that conversation with the city attorney to uh order that property, get into a position where we can. Um any, anyone else in the city commission, any questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead.
The runway trimming, just point a clarification, uh per the FAA regs. Does the trimming requirement extend beyond city property under private property?
It does not.
Okay.
To my knowledge, it does not. So what, once we, once this, uh, once the clearing is complete from what was pre-approved in the current agreement that all aspects doing. Then what we'll do is we'll get measurements and then you, we'll just triangulate to say. Here's the runway, here's the specs FAA says, here's the distance, what's the rate of ascent or descent, and then we can determine. Are there any other trees? It's my understanding and speaking with some of, some of Miss Kim's neighbors as well. Uh they, there was initially talk about removing trees and this, in this greater swath into backyards and things. So when we, what commission has already approved is this, this kind of this straight line approach. And it does extend beyond uh each, east and west side, I'm sorry, the north and south side of the active runway on O nine on Boyce Street. And then um. But I don't know if that's the case, just looking at it myself and just doing a, a kind of a quick visual and measurements. Um with the iPhone, just how tall is this tree? Plus, we had um all aspects there and they could tell me the age of the tree. If it had already hit the maximum height for that particular species. Uh I do believe though that there is going to be some additional tree trimming warranted over there because the initial scope. Um it's too, it's going to be too narrow, so there's going to be a requirement, I'm pretty confident there'll be a requirement. To come back further, both on the, 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 um. It's Thornton Drive, Thompson Drive, sorry, Thompson Drive to Rockaway to Boys. We may want to extend that a little bit. And then carry it back a little bit further, there was initially a discussion of a twenty-foot buffer. And that, that leaves a lot of very tall trees in that. And so the conversation I had this evening with Mr. Varney was. You know, perhaps we should look at a ten-foot buffer, and the reason behind that is we don't want Thompson Road to suddenly have a two-track. To Boys, right? That's, that's an undeveloped continuation of that road. So until such time a commission elects to bring that road up to, you know, municipal standards. We want to have a, plus, as you're looking down the street, there's still this green line end of street that's aesthetically pleasing.
So I'm just, I wanted to clarify and, Miss Kim, if. Has there been communication with regards to the trimming activity and how it might impact your, your area?
So. With people, um what might be happening, there, uh I think the numbers that you already gave, you were just giving me something about a hundred and fifty. What, there, like I said, it goes right up to the fence.
Okay.
And we know they have to go over the fence with the, with the, the minimal. Um.
Right.
Okay, I, so I, I spoke with her, her husband Ron, yes, I spoke with Ryan this evening, I let him know that we would be discussing this tonight. And then I will call him tomorrow morning. So um, so yeah, I'll be speaking with him tomorrow to share with him what's going on, but yes, sir. Well, to clarify, John, and for you, Bob, and so, wh- when I was on the airport advisory board, there, there's a complete study that FHA has. So if you envision, um you know, Spartan Stadium, your favorite stadium, Detroit Stadium, it doesn't matter, it's the same way. So it's, it's, it's all tiered. So the, the, the hundred twenty-five is extremely vague. From there, it, it steps up on both sides and it steps up on both ends. So again, if you picture a stadium, it's just bleachers going up on all four sides, so.
I would like to know because if that tiered approach is in fact, how it is implemented. It will impact uh private residents.
It, it, yeah, especially at Thompson. And, and, you know, that's, you know, that's the main, you, you know, the main approach.
Right.
Uh and uh, uh while, while the uh. East end is used to, the, the main approach is coming from the west because of the. And so it's um, and, and as well as takeoff, uh so the biggest problem. There's not, there's not much on the other end, you, you know, the biggest thing that we had on the other end was the power line that was addressed. And that's why you see the big orange balls up there and stuff. So it's mainly on the, the west end. And, and, and it will affect, you know, some of Thompson and, and getting over that way. They don't need to all come down, it's, they just need to top and stuff, but yes, there needs to be, we, we need to talk about the full. Comprehensive aspect of what, you know, the cost is going to be for sure. And that'll be, we'll know more on that, uh Commissioner Foul, once this initial one is cleared out and then we'll have a, a good idea and say, okay. Uh as Commissioner Moody said, what else do we need to meet? That, that height restriction as that tiered approach or uh, you know, takeoff or ascent and descent. But as of, as of right now, there's nothing being touched along that property for the game, there's nothing. Uh Lamaca, the Lamacia property, there's nothing along that line, and there's still going to be a buffer along Brockway. That those trees originally, anything that's, I guess, will be south of that uh. That walk path as it cuts through the corner from Voice to Brockway.
Okay.
You do.
I do, on the Heritage Center, um the Heritage Center is. Not part of the city, but occupies space within the city, so um. Is it our obligation as the city to provide cold storage for the Heritage Center? So I, I'd just like to know. I would suspect it came about because they needed space and they created space, but.
No.
I, I'd like to know what that relationship is and um. How this, what is the relationship between the city and the Heritage Center that would require us to provide cold storage space?
It, it's my understanding that all of those assets are owned by the city. So those are city assets, is that correct?
Gifts to the rest, they're owned by the city, so gifts to the city.
Yes, sir.
Shared ownership.
Right, so they were transferred to the city and it required, anytime there's a disposition of any of them requires mission approval. For that, uh you know, there's a community sale or anything of that without the permission of approval. So since it was an asset. Which is why I was looking for guidance on how we would protect that asset.
Okay, well, I was unaware that the city had ownership of the assets of the museum, the, the pieces, so. Thank you, that was welcome.
Um, I'm going to give you one last note that I got, uh John was PCI, please have a PCI rating. That pavement uh condition index for the airport, for that joint conversation as well, if possible, I mean.
Right, if it's gonna.
It would be nice to have that information.
Well, it depends on that cost to do it. I'm going to try if I can get at least a, a cursory. Right, knowledge of it by bringing somebody in from another airport that would be willing to come in and say, great, this is how we do it. To, to have an official one would incur an expense, but I, I'd like to get close if I could for that meeting. Perfect, all right, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, sir. Uh you. Uh.
Well, gorge.
Oh, okay. He said he was good already.
All I wanted to say on the, uh on the PCI is, I, I, I would like to hold that bus for a moment. And only to be uh air on the caution side, because I would not want to back us into a corner. That now you did a study and now it says that X needs to be done, and now we are going to be immediately held responsible for that. We, you know, we talked early on this year about uh the uh, uh the crack ceiling on the runway. And the then city manager said, we're not going to do crack ceiling. Okay, I don't understand that, we're doing crack ceiling everywhere else, fine, if that's, you know, he was the airport manager. Uh, so I, I would, I would look to do some of those things and, and fix what needs to be done, but. Uh I, that's my only concern, is that we back ourselves in.
Yeah, I, I understand that concern, but my, the perspective that I have is this, a lot of people. Just going to be blunt, pissed off that we increased the rates. There's a justified reason behind the decision-making process on rate increases. We're looking to increase revenue over here, I mean. The, 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 the trouble and the muddy issue that we're dealing with with the Marina is going to be repeated here very s- very, very soon with the airport. We have X, Y, and Z to fix, we put this off, put this off, put this off. And it's not that I want to know it back in a corner, it's I want to know what the cost of getting everything, because another complaint is. We're subpar, we're subpar Marina, we're subpar airport. Well, it's because we haven't been taking care of it, we haven't been investing in it. We haven't been budgeting for it correctly, we haven't been doing preventative maintenance, we've been putting off, there we're cutting, we've been putting off crack ceiling. So what is that, you know, rating of that runway? It's not that I want to know what it is to back in corners, I want to know what it is so it adds to the value of the conversation as. This is why we need to increase revenue. We need you to be self-sustaining. We can't be robbing and subsidizing the general fund to support this. When you should be an enterprise fund.
Well, all I'm saying is after sitting on there for two years and now Sandy's on there, the, the point is, is that, you know, they're, they're screaming. I would, I would like to hear from the airport advisory board because they're screaming for, well, we want, you know, we need to put, we need to put in this extra taxiway. And we need this taxiway, taking care of the runways in, in quite decent shape. We should have, yeah, I don't know why we didn't do the crack scene, but we did, we still can. But, y- you know, the runway is, you know, I think when you, when you talk to the airport advisory board. It's going to be more about the taxiway and putting in the additional taxiway, which, which isn't going to be um cheap either. So that, that was the only point that I wanted to make. Turn over using.
With notes?
Nope, that's okay.
Um, well, I, I guess I'm going to come back to the, the airport and then I'm going to start at the top on the other. Um. We know, as been pointed out, that we, we have a problem and it, and it's a, it is a, a safety issue. Um with the gap, uh at the airport advisory meeting, someone mentioned that the gap is so large. That those with smaller planes with the wheel can get stuck in it. And, excuse me, it's been outlined how this has been on the radar for four years. I'm not sure of the value, I, for me personally. Um of bothering to go get a study to tell us that we're bad and that we already know it. Um to me, it's, the visual is obvious and the action required is obvious, and that's. We've got a list of things, particularly with regard to the runway and the taxiway that need to be addressed and the tie-down line. So let's get numbers on them. Um we, in our budget last year. There were, I think it was a nebulous repairs and maintenance of twelve thousand five hundred. And then another ten thousand for engineering. And then capital outlay, excuse me, airport improvements. Of fifty thousand, which I believe was slated for tree removal. When I look at that, it says tree removal, the notes in the budget, pavement markings, crack ceiling and other improvements. And it died. I mean, it's, it's just died. So. I would, I could, I, I, I feel for our, our advisory board, they're a tenacious bunch and they are very built and dedicated to, to what they do. Um, so to me, that's, that's the plan. It's to get a list of things that are problems. And then one is very obvious, which is a, not, that I don't know the crack ceiling is going to fix. So let's put numbers to it and get actions, um so that we can go on with. Improving that, hang on a minute, as Tim points out, a financial plan and, and I, I concur wholeheartedly. The trees, I had asked, or spoken with Doug, Doug after the last meeting and trying to get clarity on. What's the city's responsibilities and then, and then what's beyond that? And I, I believe you indicated at that time, Doug, that you had a complete quote. And then it may be stale, but you had a complete quote for the work that needed to be done, and then absolutely included. Um beyond the city property. And in fact, there was what a lie detector that um Scott McPherson did. Um, I, two years ago, it, it, it gives you different ways to look at the thing from different dimensions. And it's obvious, so there isn't any confusion, the information's out there. Um Richard might not have been aware of it because he wasn't on the committee and certainly you weren't, because you weren't here. But it's there, so we, we have the information that we need to get to add. Um, so I, I. Let us pull together the information that we have and come up with a proper plan.
Right, say something.
Sure.
So yes, we did pull that quote, we were trying to work out um. Capitalize while the team is there now removing trees of what that would be, and it's, it, there's too much to really. Bring it to you complete, but the initial, initial quote was uh about seven one thousand dollars to do all the tree removals, everything. Uh in the airport, that was the initial quote in October of last year, I believe, is that resolution was to approve the eighteen thousand five hundred. Which the uh, the contractor held to that price for this project at this point. Um, but because the, you know, the change in the details and the motions and to do something, you know, at the last minute for the commission. We said, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that because the price points, it didn't, it didn't make sense to me. I wanted to bring something in Doug as well. Bring something that we could, we could share with you what's going on. Uh, so those numbers now in that meeting. We will have those. We can bring them in this commission meeting or we can bring them to. The joint session with the advisory board because that's one of the items that you're gonna wanna see in terms of tree removal, but also at that point. We'll have a very clear understanding of what would be the impact to the GIMM property, what would be the impact to the Lamachia property? And then where are we going to take it as well as, you know, down both sides of the uh, of the, the, down the fence line? And then down the uh, the north side where it's in that valley, the gully. So we do have that big toe for you.
I'd still like to see it. Number one. Number two, the scoping to what we approved. You're saying it was seventeen thousand. Eighteen thousand to do the portion that was. All of the, the parcel at the west end? Or just to see the, what's gonna be the community garden? That's the question. Was it just for? The community garden portion or for the entire west end that's city-owned?
It's so the eighteen thousand five hundred for that proposal that was approved. Runs through the middle of essentially what is the undeveloped Thompson Street. All the way to the sidewalk on this, on Brockway that comes down Voice. And then there's a, it cuts to the corner and cuts in. So everything to the sidewalks or everything to the, to the north of that sidewalk. To halfway through what's the undeveloped Thompson Street to the back up to a twenty foot. Order. Um, and so that's it. So they wanted to leave a twenty foot green gel. So that's what's approved and stuff removal. So it's the removal of the trees in that area and the stump removal. It's not, it's not grading. It's not any fill. It's not laying down rye grass or anything. It's a relief. Cut the trees in that area, grind out the stumps, haul out the debris.
Okay. So I'd like to see a picture of that. For a graphical person and I'd like to see what area that covers. Um, and, and you mentioned incoming weeks. As far as it getting in on their schedule, is there any greater definition than incoming weeks?
Well, the first thing we gotta do is get the quote for the rest of the work with what they've already completed is gonna be out of it. Once that quote's approved, which we can get that probably tomorrow or the next day for everything else. We can put that at the next meeting and I'll ask them what his schedule is. So at the next meeting, you can review the entire quote, but I do know. That exceeds the overall fifty thousand dollars that's put in there for capital.
Well, my, my, my question is this. You mentioned that we had previously approved monies.
Correct.
For that scope of work. Is that what you're referring to? All aspects has this. On their schedule to complete in the coming weeks. That scope of work that has been previously approved, the emotion twenty twenty-four, ten, one, ninety-one. When is that work gonna take?
So that is specific. Remember this, this document is created last Wednesday, Thursday. So in the coming weeks was, could be, it happens, the coming week happens to be this week. The situation with the contractor is there was an illness that was delaying it. So hold on, the illness that was delaying this. So the only information I had from Wednesday was, hey, John, we are, we have you on our schedule. In the coming weeks. Well, the coming weeks, we left the plural behind and the coming week is this week. So they're there now. And that would be the delay of information again, because this is stale data to last week. The individual that was not well is now he's well and they're working on the property today. They were there all day.
Great. That's all I was trying to get to because this was a question was asked last meeting is to please get a hard date to deal with what we, we approved. And they're working on it. And so that's the clarity that I was hoping for on the motion of the actions that have been. Done beyond that. Obviously, you know, the, the dialogue and instructions that have come from the commission tonight will help. And certainly the joint meeting coming up on the twenty-fourth will be extremely useful. Um, enough on trees. And the runway and taxi repairs, I think, you know, I'm clear. I, I, I want to see quotes for all of the things that need to be done. We need to see quotes so we can figure out where it falls, what we can do this year and where it goes into these. Um, capital improvement plan. And, and Tim, I want to assure you on the hangar inspection. I believe Richard Bauders previously did a great job. And they absolutely do take a look for things that were non-essential and, and busted some people for. The cheapest storage unit you could ever hope for.
Right. It's, it's part of the race conversation.
So that was, that was great. Um, now moving to the. DPW, I'm, I'm specifically with the wastewater plant and, and, and other aspects of our, our city sewer. And help me, I, I, I don't, I, I believe there was a. Uh, a contract that we approved that you requested for the inspection of our various water facilities throughout. Um, the whole city. And I wondered what the status was of that. Um, and I'm also curious to know what the status of pump house, of the river mouth pump house. Pump number three.
Commissioner. This may, so Mr. Varney and I talked about this may, we can do it upon when you're done with going through my report. But as, as tangent to this report, he has a lot of literally. Current as of before this meeting information. So if I'd welcome the opportunity, if you approve. Have him update you on many of the things that you just talked about. And that way he can give you hopefully a relatively succinct but informative. Presentation about where we are at the State of the Union with regards to water.
We can take that up under good of the order. Ideally, it would be an agenda item, but um, I'm just asking based on your report. So. Um, I don't want to confuse any of the other issues that we have, specific issues that are on the agenda. But we did approve monies for a full inspection and we hired a company apparently to do this. Know what that is. And I'd like to know the status of the pump house, whether we do it tonight or otherwise, or we have a, a special discussion with DPW. Um, the sub-panel, I asked for the document specifically of when the purchase order was issued for Mr. Waggoner. I think that gets clarity for um, responsibilities and delays. And that are occurring to, you know, for us and what I'm gonna call unnecessary rough. Very, very hardworking marina team and city administration trying to Ralph, you know, trying to bring it together. Um, the bill backs on the shore cleats and E-stop covers, I would think that would be a simple. Um, document that could be submitted as a change order, uh, number three. And I guess I'd be looking for that coming up in the next meeting.
Did you repeat that? You wanted?
So the shore cleats and E-stop covers were misses. From the original contract. There's a dollar amount attached to that. We paid the bill, it would should come through as a change order to document, in my opinion. A change order for a credit. And that should be.
We were never charged for the cleats.
I'm sorry?
We were not charged for the cleats. They were put in, so it actually effectively was not on any invoice to charge to the.
Okay. And the, and the stops?
These stops, um, no, these stops were also not charged, but we would be billed. So once, I actually don't even have the final billing for the installation of the E-stops. The E-stops were also, we weren't charged for it, but charged for it. And that's where the commission recommended that we would hold. Final payment to Alba Marsh and offset with the cost of the E-stop.
Yes, I'm looking for a simple document. That shows the pluses and the minuses, material, any, any labor costs, any material costs that we incurred that's associated with it. And have it submitted so that we can. Have it right here now while it's fresh in everyone's mind as a change order. I'm sorry, these are scope changes or the issues that have fallen back on this. And it's cost us money. And thing, every time we've had this conversation in the past, particularly with the previous city's manager. And ask for debits and credits, we never saw anything. So I guess I'd like to see that. I'd like, it, it's normal. To, when you have an issue like that arise, just like the pluses is, you know, the minuses, the pluses rather, there's minuses. So please. Um, I appreciate what Bob had to say about the rip rap. It is, it's, it is a real, it's a concern on that sidewalk. So. I'm glad that we're looking hard at that. The uh, five trees, same thing, formal document for the change order showing, with a change order showing the D-Duck. It's audit trails, records, it's transparent. Everybody knows what happens. We're gonna talk about the Ireland Sister City Visit. Thank you very much for all that follow-up. And uh, speaking with the others and getting clarity on, on what they hope to see. I think it's gonna be really, really important. Um. And I also appreciate very much you asking for some sort of report out from um. Ingrid and, and then basically I think we've asked for it before as a commission. Where anyone from this city that goes to a class, goes to a convention, goes anywhere. That they come back with some sort of report, lessons learned, new ideas, any materials that go along with that. So I really appreciate that request and I'd like to see follow-through in all regards when we send people off, ourselves included. Um. We talked about the airport. Planning and zoning position. You said something that was interesting to me. I guess maybe I missed it in one of our previous meetings. You said you posted both the director and the associate planner. I missed that. I guess it. Um. I guess I mean, my, one of my questions related to that is have we? I'm glad to hear we got five responses. That's awesome. Um, have we A gone back through any previous candidates? That for whatever reason were marked off by the previous city manager? I think fresh eyes might be useful. Um, and the other is have we reached out to any recruiters? Because I think we discussed it last time. We said we were. Willing to do that, um, as needs be. Um, it, it, it was one of the two main priorities. That each of us gave you as the interim, you know, the number one being the monitoring and CWRF. Program into getting that, that position filled. So that would. Have you considered speaking with any recruiters?
So at the last, at the last meeting when this came up, it was suggested that let's see. What we've seen with this approach before we engage and spend money with, with recruitment. So this has been, you know, what, a, a week and a half, a week out since, or more, more than that, because it was last meeting. So it's been, let's say two weeks that we've got this thing rolling. And we, I think after the holidays, we'll see more activity because people are doing other things during the holiday season. And then we'll go through, but what I did not do, and that's a great idea, is I will find out where the prior applications were, are located for this position and go through them.
Thank you for that. And the drag race update, sounds like things are going along great. Thank you for that. Um, the one question that I still have was the request by Deb Martin to name them. The Randy Howard Memorial Drag Races. You may not have dealt with that in your committee yet, but I think they needed or wanted that. Um, to know, to put in their promotional materials. Um, I, they were on the verge of moving the whole thing to East Jordan. So, um. Good job on saving that, but I guess I'm, my, was the question of renaming or do we need to do that?
Would be a simple resolution by the city commission because there's no official committee for the drag races. So it's just a simple resolution if the commission wants to act upon it.
So if we can add to the. Add.
Yeah, yes. With regards to Ms. Martin, we, I have been, I mean, and we went through all the notes and all the things. We are going to create a steering committee of five individuals to, you know, that way we have this, this collective. Uh, brain trust, as it were, to identify things like, one of the things that will come up will be the naming of that. And that way we can. Present it to the commission and the commission can decide how they want to go. But Ms. Martin is going to be, I don't know if you've had a chance to reach out to her yet. But she will be invited to join that steering committee, uh, which will be John Hill, DeBran, myself, Jen, Deb Martin. And probably Aaron, uh, Aaron Wilson.
I was just looking to resolve and dispose of a simple matter that was raised a month ago. That's all. Can you with the committee or whatever?
So now we confront what Ms. Martin wanted.
Um, I have similar questions as Bob does about the Heritage Center. Um. And I guess I've learned that we, the city owns the items, but. I, I guess I thought the management and location and storage of that fell to the heritage. Um, commission, uh, Heritage Center group. Um, because that's a, that's a substantial amount of space. So I guess we need to get some clarity on, on that. And, and I, and I thought at one, one point. I'm not sure if I was on the commission or not, they were or had hired some entity to catalog. Everything. So, you know, that, that at least exists should something happen and somebody, um, family members. Because there are some family members out there that are pretty upset about how their stuff's being handled. I've heard about it from. From multiple places. At least, I don't know if that archival list was done or not, but. We need to get, I, I would like to, like Bob to get some clarity on whose responsibility it is to find space. And proper storage for this because again, again, I don't know if I was sitting here or out there. Having climate-controlled storage is not cheap. So if that's something of responsibility that we need to take on, then I guess we need a dollar value attached to that. Um. The Boeing City uh, parking lot potential property acquisition, I think that's great. Unfortunately, it's outside of the DDA. And that would have been one way means by which we could, um. Work out special funding for it, but I support that um, as well. On the fourth of July or just in general, you post event reviews. Um, I think those are great. You, you didn't mention it and you probably did include them, but I, I, I think it would make sense. To include the main, a member or more of the main street board on any of those, those meetings. Um. And possibly the Chamber of Commerce, um, to make sure their inputs are considered. Um. And I think on page fifty-seven, you talked, there is the Marina Gant chart. But it, it doesn't show revised dates and that would be, that would be nice. Um, it, it's, I think it's on page fifty-seven. The, the timeline, because obviously everything else has had slipped. Right now it shows completion. Uh, closeout on September eighth, or is that still tracking given the panel situation?
We'll update that.
Okay, it might be, but, but anyway, I'm glad to see the Gant chart. Those are extremely useful planning tools. And that's it.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, John, two commissioners have given their perspective and positions on the property acquisition. Um, did you as well?
No, no, I was fine.
Well, yeah, yeah. So, so you have direction right there.
Thank you.
Um, you guys want to give your position on that property acquisition before moving on, just to be on record?
I would like to know, to know what that would entail. So. Is it in the DDA?
It is not. Are you in support of him continuing the conversation?
I'm in support of continuing.
Okay.
Yes.
Alrighty, moving on to agenda item number seven, reports to officers, boards and standing committees. Uh, any public comment, questions, concerns in regards to agenda item number seven, eight through F. Already going to the city commission, any question, comments, concerns on agenda item seven, eight through up? Yeah. Alrighty, moving on to agenda item eight, a continued housing discussion. Alrighty, John, give us, you don't have to go through the agenda. We've been here for an hour already. Um, and we're just getting on that agenda material. I would say touch topics. And what you feel important um, in regards to your meeting with. Uh. WRG.
Yes. So we actually met with the, with the principal of WRG, planners for that. Uh, Kyle and I met with him. We discussed what they gotta have. Kyle and I met with him. We discussed what the gotta haves were. We discussed what, um, some of the problems were. So the things that were the gotta haves and we have. We have another meeting scheduled with him because I do want to go through and and look at some of these footprints. I have it all in one. Bucket for you to look at, but basically what they're saying is that that P two, P two ten, tax evasion for ten years. Uh, and they're going to, they're going to revise the pro forma because it's obviously sale dated as well. So they'll revise that. They they would like the Brownfield Housing Tiff for thirty year. Kyle and I are researching to see. Some of the Brownfield, uh, grant opportunities have time limitations on it. I don't know if the Brownfield Housing Tiff has, the reason I say that for the term of it for thirty years. Because they, uh, one of their wants is to purchase the property for a dollar. And I said, that is, um, that is going to be something that would really require a lot of discussion. So I believe that something either. Fair market or appraisal, appraised value would be a number that we could bring to the commission. I said, I will bring anything to the commission. It's going to be up to them what to decide. I'm not going to decide that, but instead of just saying a dollar, why don't we evaluate? What it would take if we went to appraised value or what it would take to get to market value. And so one of the ideas was. The Brownfield Housing Tiff and extending that out ten years. So that was, um. Thank you from the the Brownfield redevelopment, uh, board. The, if that was forty year. Then it makes it more palatable to purchase the property for perhaps a a something other than a dollar, some appraised value or or market value. The other thing we looked at was, uh, you know, then they wanted to do something with a reduction or elimination of tap fees. Well, for that, we need to find out what are the building plans? Is it going to be one service meter to the building? You know, I don't, I can't see there being forty different service meters or buildings to the building. It's typically one to serve the building. And then the water fee is dropped into the rent kind of thing, but I don't know that yet because I haven't seen any of the construction plans or what those engineering plans look like. Uh, the other one was the uh, M E D, uh, M E D C grants. That Kyle's actually going through and he's been doing a lot of research as well as the people from Rip, uh, Levitt Group. To come up with what grants are available. We've already. We discounted several of the grant opportunities because, uh, W R G has grown in stature to such a point that they no longer qualify some of the, um. What a smaller developer might be when they're, when they're creating these units. So the grant opportunities are there. Um, you know, for us, they they're looking at, A, what can we do to help clear some of the site plans or site work? Uh, again, those costs. Will determine them and then it's going to be a due discretion whether you want to partake in it or just say, listen, you're the developer, you build it. The last thing that they asked for, and this pretty much, even though the land has never been occupied. Uh, anytime that you're going for these, for these grants and you're looking at brownfield involvements. Uh, they always want a phase one, even if the property hasn't been inhabited for a hundred years that you can rec- report. And we're going to want an appraisal because that's going to give the commission an idea of where do we. What's the price point? What are we looking to receive? You know, what do you want to get for that property? So I don't. I don't have. The the, I don't, well, we're working on to find out what it appraises what costs as well as a phase one environmental. And then we're also looking at. What does her schedule look like? Can we get this done before the next meeting? Uh, get the. Appraisal quotes and the phase one quote, so we can present it to the commission at the next meeting to approve the expense to do that. Uh, and and that's, that's pretty standard on that. Another thing that they talked about was. Um, they, they have concerns about the, you know, the hundred and one units and what would be the rental? How quickly could they fill the occupancy and things? And one of the things that that may. Uh, that you might consider is if we did this in terms of phases, and by that I mean, create one building. Lease it, build it, and what Mr. Revett said is. Let's say that we do that and we fill the building and before we even fill the building, we got ten or twenty on a waitlist for another building. They will continue to roll right on through and and roll into the next building. So they just want to see what the market. Will hold, what the market demand is on that. And what that's going to do as well is. You know, we can see how this works. The conversation at that point would be. Do we split the property into segments or do they purchase the property? In full and with the plans to build these other units. That is something that needs a, wants a deeper discussion. On what's the criteria because, yeah, you know, we don't want to have, I would, I would assume that the commission doesn't want to have. An entire property locked up with one housing development on it and you've got a developer moving on anything else. That's not a good position to be in. So this is where that conversation comes into play and how it goes. I talked about. Deed restrictions as well, which is another thing that we would get into as we move through this path. And then I also talked about, um. You know, the deed would be held in an escrow, so. Uh, until such time as they received all of their funding. So when they, when they hit and they would establish a dollar amount, whether it's one building or three buildings. They would establish a dollar amount required based on their pro formas and we would qualify and say. The deeds and deeds in escrow until, you know, if it's fifteen million, until you meet your fifteen million in funding. And then the deed transfers over. So those are just some of the things that go on. What they're doing now on their end. Is rewriting, working up a current pro forma, uh, and then we're going to, they're, they need to look at it if it's going to be one building or three buildings. And then they're also going to do a, um, just. What's the word for it? I'm sorry, just this schematic, the.
Site plan.
Site plan, thank you. They're going to do the site plan. I have a lot twirling around in my head right now. They're going to do the site plan. And provide that to you, to the commission as well, so we can look at it. Uh, and at that point, I think. We will, and I have spoken to other. Locations that they're building, they're building heavily in Traverse City right now. I know the people on those projects. Um, I think they'll do a good job. Mr. The Vet, the principal, he has, um, longstanding ties in the community. So he's not someone that. Is downstate. He's up here all the time. He has a boat and in the other harbor. So he is here, been here for many. Which that also made me happy to know that he has a vested interest and he's essentially, um, you know. Called a quasi resident of Point City. That's where we are right now. Once we get those other things and put together for you, we'll come to the next mission and there'll be an ask for approval. Uh, what I need to do for next steps or answer questions that you have before I can get approval for what I need to do for next steps. Because the the first, we have a, uh, grant period coming up in October. And another one in April, and then it repeats again in October and April. So it'd be nice if we could. Get things done so they can at least meet some of those grant applications for the October. And what I did when I worked on a type of project before is I, we extended out two years, so we could hold the deed in escrow. You know, pull the whole thing open for two years and that allows them to go through it at least. Two October and two April grant cycles to get their money. And if they don't do it, then everything reverts back to the city anyway. The deed gets transferred back. And and it's, and it's kind of done at that point. And then we look and evaluate another developer or something. So. That's where we are, where we're, they are, they are committed. They definitely want to do this project. They want to complete partnership and building with Point City. You have any questions regarding that information?
Thank you. I'm going to the public, public comment, questions, concerns on agenda item eight, eight. Alrighty, I'm going to go to the board for deliberation. Uh, we'll start down with Commissioner Farrell and go this way.
Just to clarify, John, um. They're talking about breaking it into three, three phases. Is that correct?
No, that's an option. Right now, right now, the project as it stands, as it was originally discussed.
Right.
Is doing a hundred and one units with three separate buildings on the, on that, on that. And the plat has been updated. G I S does ref- sorry, the G I S plat does reflect the the newly sections. For this project, but right now it's three. I just say that that's an option to discuss as we, as. As we move down the path.
And the recreational easement for the the rest of the property, is that in your radar?
Yeah, the the part that we've talked.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner.
I'm good. Thanks for the update, John.
You're welcome. Um, so I got a few notes on this memo here, John. Ultimately. I can envision this being a difficult topic and what are the next steps? Um, so. I'm going to assume that you're looking for guidance on next steps essentially from the commission with your conversations with W R G. So I'm just going to go through your memo from that perspective, um. When I talked to you before you had this meeting with them, I just kind of gave you my perspective. I said, I'm not going to speak for the commission. I'm going to communicate to you what I've heard the commission communicate multiple times in public meetings and. That's a challenge for that dollar purchase. Um, and that's what I. To you in regards to that tip extension, um. Have you had that conversation with them about extending that and what was their reaction?
Positive.
Okay, so next steps to me, for me, what I'm envisioning is now, and you've, you've already said it, I've notated it here, they're writing a new format update. What is that net, what is that? Okay, and from my perspective. There's two different price points, right? There's market value, raised value. Um, you can even consider taxable value. Me personally, I think appraised value is a good starting point. Um, so I would love to see a pro formula at praised value for their tip, whatever they want that tip model. Sounds like you're indicating that they're looking for a potential forty year tip. So if it's going to be purchased at a praise value, if they're asking for a forty year tip, what does that, what do those numbers look like? It'd be nice to know.
He's running those.
Perfect, um. Do, uh, provide Tiff model. You said that they're doing that. So. John, breaking down, the funding is going to be, so you have right here in Island. This gets brought up at every housing conference you go to, um, but that forty three million that's made available, available. That's for the state of Michigan, from my understanding. Then they break it down by region specific.
Correct.
And you even notate here in region D. So it'd be nice to know what those metrics are specific to region D. Because from my understanding, conversations are like Dan Leonard and that. That's really where you start being able to gauge the light weakness of securing that. Um, when you look at your region specific metrics, meaning region D out of this. Forty three million is going to receive ten million.
Correct.
And they've already given away nine out of ten million. So if we go ask for two point five, we already know it's going to be a no.
Correct.
Um, so if there's an opportunity and what I wrote here is what is region D funding metrics, question mark? Um, housing north Zach Samuels, I believe, should be the one to help assist in understanding what region D funding is and what those current metrics are. Um, with his organization and our membership that we're paying for that would be. Someone I think you could tap into there to obtain what region D funding metrics look like. And then going into like the request for reduce or eliminate a tap fees, infrastructure fees for water sewer, that's. It's not that I don't think the commission is willing to do that, but from my understanding, that's all re, that's all reimbursable through the Brownfield redevelopment. So. It it would be nice to explore that conversation a little bit more, just to understand what their expectations and, um, understanding is of the brownfield. Because from my understanding, the developer can pick, you know, pay those and get reimbursed through that brownfield and or even the municipalities. And the law changed in twenty twenty three to allow municipalities to get reimbursed through that. So. If we did reduce and or eliminate those tap fees, from my understanding, the city, the municipality can get reimbursed through the brownfield. Would those reduced or eliminated tap fees? And it would be nice to have that understanding. Is right now, and what I'm, what I'm communicating to you, John, is if you ask to meet or approve this with reduced or eliminated. Um, tapping fees without knowing if that's reimbursed for the city, I couldn't give you a decision on that.
No, we're, I'm even checking to see if the phase one and the appraisal would be something that would be reimbursable through that program.
Okay, perfect. And then that takes me right to the next one. On the very last item bullet point you have here says, explore discussing utilizing city resources to clear and level the land to reduce site work related costs. From my understanding, that's reimbursable to the developer and it certainly approved the legislation change in twenty twenty three, the municipality. So it'd be nice to, one, tap dug into that conversation of, is it even feasible to do this in-house? With his operation workload he currently has, because this would be an add for them, so to speak. And I wouldn't want to just throw it on them without them voicing their opinion if it is something that they could do. But if they did do that, again, is that reimbursable through the brownfield? My assumption interpretation is that it is. Um, and it would be nice to know if we even have to push that. So.
Sure.
If we can save face and time and energy with a crew that gets overwhelmed and ran very thin. And it can get reimbursed by the developer, I'm really interested in the developer, you know, getting smacked with that and getting reimbursed through the tip. Instead of drawing down the resource that we're really drawing down currently. Um, and then the one bullet point you have here, John, is it talks about the S S R P grant. I'm not too familiar with that. I'll do some homework, um, because I love homework, but, uh. I'm, I I don't know much about, but it would be nice reading this and doing just some like quick Googling on it. I think it, it would, it would be great for us to have a conversation with the N L E A. Because it sounds like the N L E A might be able to help ramp us up or secure some type of S S R P funding. Um, because it says right here, typically eligible applicants are not individual housing developers directly. Instead, they are political subdivisions of state, county, cities, which that's what we are. Local economic development, development corporations, N L E A, that's exactly what they are and we are paid membership to them, so. It'd be a good resource for us to tap into. So those are kind of the questions and the points that I have, um. I hope that helps provide some clear guidance and, you know. Understanding as to what's going to help me make a decision the next time this is drawn up.
Perfect. And then what what we're hopefully working towards is. This is what I, when I took a project similar to this, exactly like this actually before. Is that at some point the commission will authorize me to negotiate. And I think it's approved, but to begin negotiating all of the terms based on the feedback I received up to that point. And then, so I'm beginning the process of, okay, this is a line item. Yes, alright, good, this is. And we have all the supporting information, what's actually reimbursable, all of that, that data to it. But at some point, which we'll have that for the next meeting, but at some point, the commission would authorize the city manager to begin the negotiation. And then as the bullet points skim through. The meeting updates are, hey, they've got some refinements. Here's where we are at this point. Is there, so. It's basically, anytime, if you're do a union contract, it's called a TA, temporary approval. So a lot of these things will be TA until we get to commission and then we'll say, yeah, this, you got it, it's TA, checked on. TA, no, this is what we want here. You go back to the board again, uh, go back to the table to negotiate, but that way it's streamlined in the process where. We're, we're chewing this thing down to get to the point where. And at any point during any of these meetings or any of these conversations, uh, Clarence Trevette. Will be here to present and speak on behalf of his organization and the project overall, which I would suggest. If he's, when he comes to present the pro forma, if there's question. So at that point, we can see where we are, but when we get to the future point. Yeah, we drill it down and then the presentations become a little bit more frequent for Mavet. As we're finalizing and then you have a complete packet. And at that point, you're already maybe aware of everything, so then you can make final discussions and decisions based on what Revett comes in with with it. And so that's kind of the channel that I see it happening. The timeline is going to be determined by by you as a commission.
Yeah, and it it's going to be tight for this October. It really is, but. All the communication, all the education I've received in the last four years is, it's drying up, it's drying up. So we can wait until next April. We'll look at that number, it'll be less, so expect your ask to be less. If you ask, is it be less, the affordability isn't be less. So really, we're very contradicting in what art. It is at the end of the day. Um, the only other thing that I didn't notate on the memo, but it's going to be really important for you to get some understanding. And really help guide the commission through understanding wise is, um, a revolving fund. And what I mean by that is the city commission at one point was looking at creating a local brownfield development authority themselves. Sounds like the commission's, uh, interest is staying at the county level. Um, but there is an opportunity of creating a fund at the county level. And that was one of the benefits that was talked about, um. And I talked to a few different county commissioners and it sounds like they're in favor. Of allowing the city of Point City having that type of fund, which will help fund potentially future projects. It's, it's a long-term strategic plan to help generate revenue, um, for the city to set aside specifically for housing portability projects. Um, which is going to be in the best interest of the future of the community, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, um, it'll, it'll be interesting to see, John, where we get with uh, their reworked Tiff. Program on a land purchase. As far as the simple ask, you know, this commission needs to. We need to do the uh, phase one and have some present done anyhow. In order to uh, um, proceed with anybody, so. I don't, I don't see a problem with those two asks. Uh, everything else, but much discussed there.
I, I do have an, an initial question. I know that this uh, W R G was brought up before. What is their relationship to Moxy?
Moxy is, um, there's kind of like this, there's a design element, engineers and architects and there's a developer overall, so. There, for all. Intensive purposes, it's, it's one, you know, falls under the W R G envelope, is my understanding.
It's Moxy an entity that is below W R G?
It's part of W R G, so where they stand on the hierarchy chart, I do not know.
I think, and this is just me trying to help, right there in the meeting, I think the contractors. Are the Moxy version, I think the senior leadership in the financial aspect, the design aspect of the developer is W R G. I think the contractors, the subcontractors are the Moxy crew.
So who, this to be clear. We issued a development agreement. Who would the relationship be with? If we were to issue Moxy?
Yes.
Okay, and if we were to issue a, a contract to, to proceed, once appraisals and whatever else is, who would that be with?
I think Moxy.
Moxy, so I'm confused as to. All of this dialogue. With Moxy, because I thought Moxy presented themselves as being capable of doing this. It's like MCC, for example. Had their nonprofit group to do affordable housing, which was. Here on the hierarchy, but there's a whole bunch of MCCs in the funding and the development group, but that our, our relationship was with. Or going to be with the MCC Maryland that showed up here every day. And I guess that's, I'm uncomfortable with all of this other um, discussion. Just so you know, cause I, I, I don't know. To me, if the relationships with the other guy that's sitting at the table, they're the guys that are signing the agreements, unless I'm wrong. Mistaken, but that's who. Presented to us and that's who we do, that we go forward with the deal. Um, I think. I agree, I, 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 I got ahold of um, Frankfurt and I got ahold of, I asked them for a copy. Are a, a copy of uh, the document that they use to initiate. Their discussion to cover the things like you're talking about, and I will forward that to all of you. Um, and it pretty much covers, it's, it's, I mean, they, they were the trailblazers, they're the ones that, you know, we did, you know, we went and visited. And they have done it before, it's, it's certainly, you know, something that we could steal shamelessly from, it's done, we can give it to Matt. But it will require, I believe, an agreement amongst ourselves. As to whether we're going to allow a dollar purchase, because they did, and a lot of communities do. And it gets it done, so. Um, I will be happy to share that with everyone, I think it moves us forward uh, quickly if we do steal shamelessly. Covers the appraisals, it covers checking for environmentals, it gives them a performance, but by the way, it's on. The, there are some joint activities, but the bulk of it is on Moxy.
I misspoke, so it looks like C D Barnes is a contractor. Construction, so C D Barnes Construction, and then W R G is like developer that does the design. Um, you know, the developing aspect, not the construction aspect. And it looks like those two entities are working under uh, Moxy Development Corporation. So we would be dealing with Moxy, and Moxy's the one that completed the R F P for us.
And would not Moxy be the one that would be submitting the pro forms?
Correct.
And every document would be coming from Moxy.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's who our relationship is, thank you for that, because I, I just. I, I recall hearing that you had a relationship with W R G, but that was in some other capacity, but they weren't necessarily the.
So W R G, so I actually. I, it was a housing summit that me and you were at, I met Clarence. What's his last name?
Rivette.
Rivette, Clarence Rivette.
Yep.
I talked to Clarence Rivette at lunch and he um, he is W R G. The designer, the developer, so on so forth. But he believed in Moxy because it's two different companies that make up Moxy. So we will be seeing stuff from W R G, I assume, um, that will be doing work for Moxy, cause they are Moxy.
So it would be like we could go choose for fish, remember it was, and what happened, so these are the, the players.
Right.
Well, again, I'm not hearing Moxy and all this, and it makes me uncomfortable.
Kyle has a R F P, which we all did get, if you look at that very first page, it gives a break, a breakdown of what the entities are.
Okay.
I think what she's saying is when you guys met as the advisor and stuff like.
We were saying Moxy, not W R G.
Never at any point, okay, so. Um, I'm, I'm gonna share with you the, that, I'm gonna call it the phase one development, what gets to the place. Basically, when it, it, it defines everything and it gets at the end of that, that. They're gonna proceed forward and built. So it gets the land, the legal, the deed, deed restrictions, the solenial court, it is however based on. A one dollar purchase, so I'm gonna ask you to take a look at it, pass it along, um, I'm gonna pass it to Matt. That to me. Answers a lot of your questions and, and then puts some of that to bed so we can move forward. I love what Tim said about finding out about the funding. Um, as far as deed restrictions, terms and conditions. And that sort of thing, and I've said it before, I'm gonna say it again, I believe this community needs to have some input on that as to. And to the citizens as to what is, what they hope that we would be able to achieve. Um, in terms of. Uh, this, this. Any deed restrictions that we can legally impose to make sure that our target. Audience, market, the people we're trying to serve to get worth workforce housing can actually be protected to the maximum extent possible. So that part is coming. Um. At least I, you know, I'd ask for, again, you know, I was in, in conversation with Frankfurt, so. They may have that to, to help us along and I, and I, and I'm sure any other community, Petoskey. All the way around have all, we, we weren't trailblazing here, we're, we're, we're at the end of it.
Josh Mills is a friend of mine.
So it, it is, it is important, again, to Tim's point, whether, you know, if we can at all possible. Get ourselves to a place so that we can meet, we've got a bookshelf project. Approved, so that they can. Why by October first for this first, for this next funding cycle. It would be, it would be great, and he already touched on the D P W stuff, I'm not interested in putting any more burdens on our, our, our people. And I understood things exactly the same way as Tim, they are all reimbursable expenses. Um, the revolving fund, I think, in, is extremely necessary. I think we absolutely are gonna need it, we're also potentially, and I think Tim brought it up before. Um, gonna, gonna need to find a way perhaps that we can encourage philanthropy to, to, to. Cover the funding gap, cause there will be a funding gap. So. Thanks for the clarity on W R G, um. And you've got several assignments already from Tim, so I'm gonna leave it at that, thanks.
You good, John, do you have anything else that you would have hoped to accomplish in this conversation?
No, no, so I, I, Josh Mills, he's looking at the manager in Frankfurt, he's a, he's a friend of mine, so I'll be able to. Get all the documents more closely, I agree with Commissioner Pritchard that we don't need to recreate the wheel, we will um. We'll find out what they did, how they did it, and that's why I do wanna accelerate this. One thing I did commit to Moxy. Slash W R G is that we don't ever want them waiting on this team. So effectively, anything that they need, I wanna make sure that we stay ahead of it, so they're able to get their applications in for the October round.
Okay.
Um, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'd like to add one more thought on that point, again, to move things forward quickly and hearing it firsthand. Um, I, I would suggest that we schedule a Zoom meeting. With Frankfurt and for anyone and everyone that would like to participate. And ask the questions, um, and hear the answers together. It's just a proposal, I know we don't need one more meeting, but to me, that is, would be most. You know, let's schedule it as a special session, the community can attend, hear the, the given, the take, but. You know, do it all at once, get her done. The proposal.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I just, I don't know what that looks like. So. What was that? Don't know if that they would purchase.
No, he's offered all, any assistance, any and all assistance.
Right.
He truly has, as you know, I mean, I went from our visit over there, there were magnams.
Great. Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, I guess, start that conversation with. Doc, see what their scheduled availability, what their interest in doing such a meeting would be. Um, and then just getting back. Sooner than rather late, fingers through email on an update on what job this position is or interests is. And we can go from there. Any commission have anything else before moving on? Alrighty, I'm gonna move on to agenda item eight B, Voin Valley Twining.
Um. Thanks, clearly. Quite a few hours in, do you want me to read this verbatim or do you guys just jump into questions?
Nope, this isn't the first time, I guess, let's just jump right into questions. Um, I'm gonna go to public comment first before we go to the board for deliberation. Any questions, comments or concerns in regards to agenda item eight B? This topic is follow-up on Voin Valley Twining Visit. Alrighty, I'm just gonna go to the board for deliberation then, and we'll start with Commissioner Lassiter continuing to move down this direction.
Uh, no, you, you, you spent it well here, Jen, um, I think you answered the questions I had, so everybody know I'm good.
Yes, Jen, um, John, well, you were there as well, I have the opportunity to sit in the meeting. And I'm glad I did, um. How do you pronounce his name, Dara?
Dara.
Dara, I'm glad you asked him that, the day that we met him on Zoom. In the conversation with Dara, it's very clear their interest in understanding what our democracy process is. Um, it was very interesting talking to him about what their democracy process is. Um, I think it probably even gave John a headache. Um, very interesting to see how their elected officials are elected and very interesting to see what type of. Authority they have from a regional level, I think is what you're saying. Um, down to a local level, which really, this sounds like their level of. Control begins at the county level. Um. Anyways, and the conversation was a great conversation, I understand the intent of eating and what their interest level is, um. You know, when they, when they were talking about, John was asking, what are some type of, you know, businesses that they might have an interest? We brought up the Dufuku, I think you verified that they do have a sister plant there, so I do see. A value in them coming to Boeing City and specifically learning what our local democracy infrastructure looks like. Um, Dara talked about some projects from the progress aspect that. They're gonna be beginning here or needing to do, um, so it'd be great to explore that, what our systems are. Um, one thing he did say is that they do consistently review their democracy process. And ultimately, it sounds like this is why they're interested in learning, to strengthen their democracy process, because they do have a process. That they go through regularly to change their democracy process, so that was interesting to learn that as well. Um, another aspect that was brought up in the conversation is that if there's any businesses. In Boeing City or the Boeing area that have an interest in doing business in Ireland, whether it was exporting. Um, so on so forth, that they would connect them with this economic. You know, development individual, um, and they would strengthen opportunities to allow businesses to have a footprint in Ireland, so. I think that's great, and I think we should be sharing that with as many local businesses as we can, if we do lock this down. Um, so I'm in full support, the only questions I had in regards to it, when it was brought up last time, was just the housing, and I see that. You know, there's an opportunity to stay there for the seventeen thirteen eighty-six, overall, the total ask of forty-eight thirty-five eighty-seven, I'm gonna support. Um, and we'll just kinda see how it goes.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the only thing that changed from last time is it went up five hundred dollars. Um, I guess, we got a hundred-year-old caboose if they can stay in up at Mr. Lassiter's house there, so. Let's see.
Are you gonna fix them dinner and buy them beer too?
They don't want me shopping for them, but they can stay there. So. Um. Uh, whatever, it's, it's fine again, but um, they uh. I, I, I said it the last time, I, I'm not, not a big fan of uh, this falling on taxpayers, so. That's, that's where I'll go on, I don't know, uh, I don't know either of these uh, accommodations, so. Uh. Not without an address, and uh, um, so I know. Sandy spoke very much in favor of last time and said, you know, this is, this is how they do it all the time and uh. Uh, in, in the corporate world, and, and that's fine, we're not corporate, but that's what. That's what this commission says they wanna do, so be it.
I did wanna point out too that Charlotte Lake County Transit. Will be providing transportation for no cost to us. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, uh, my, my reference was to the cultural difference between doing business in the United States and doing the business in Europe. And during business in Asia, you would be hosted, um. Corporate world, tires are pretty much left uh, on their own, um. And anybody else that's coming from another divisions on their company's expense report, so specifically from a cultural standpoint. Specifically from a cultural standpoint, it would be usual to host them. Um, and I'm full support of this, I, it's. It, it. I have no objection to it as it, it's been put together, I appreciate totally all the work put into it. And the clarity on what they'd like, they'd like to see, Jen, and I think you did a bang of job, so I fully support.
Uh, Jen, I just got a quick question then, in hopes of you gonna pull it real quick. I just took your lodging, so you have two options for lodging, one at seventeen thirteen eighty-six, one at twenty-three seventy-seven twenty-seven. Um, have you confirmed schedules and booking availability for both of those?
Those were available when I put it together, I did ask if they could hold them longer, it was the fourth of July weekend, I did not get a response back. If they can hold them longer, so. I told them we were meeting today when I said I needed them held longer.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Okay, um. You got availability?
Go ahead. I think I knew at that time, yeah.
That's amazing, alrighty, um, the reason why I ask is because I just took that seventeen thirteen eighty-six. Did the whole tally and it comes out to a total of forty-one. Four thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-six cents. So I was just gonna do a, you know, and meant friendly amendment to you guys, a recommendation here to do a dollar amount of forty-five hundred dollars, not to exceed that. Um, you think that's feasible with you being able to get that lodging at that seventeen thirteen?
I mean, we can hope so, and those other numbers could also be, you know, if they're give or take, they're food, so.
Right.
We can make it work.
Yeah, forty-five hundred would still be leaving you guys a gap of about three, yeah, well, three hundred fifty bucks. Alrighty, I'll just make a motion that the city commission authorized a hosting budget of four thousand five hundred dollars and designate a city clerk treasurer. Or city manager to coordinate expenses related to lodging, transportation, meals and hospitality. For the Voin Valley Twining Visit scheduled for August eighteenth for the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'd support, and, but. I was going to, I didn't have the opportunity to speak on this, but. But uh. I'm in favor of moving forward on it, so, and I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Further discussion? Uh, real quickly, Jessica?
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nemechek.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moving on to agenda item eight C, Marina Waiters. Moving on to agenda item eight C, Marina waitlist.
Alright, so you should have all of the answers to the survey questions. Um, we had a pretty good turnout when we did it here in person. The overwhelming response was leave it alone. Yes, we know it's long. We expect it's gonna be long. Leave it as is. Everybody found a waitlist that came and people that have slips now, just like it as is. Um, so. Like to just keep our waitlist policy as is. That is written now.
Uh, going to the public for public comment, questions, concerns. Yep, you just have to come up to the podium and state your name and address, John, and then you can continue with any public comment you'd like.
My name is John McCann, address six West Main Street here in Boyne City. I'm fully in support of the conclusion of the committee. I don't think you ought to change the waitlist. Uh, I'm a product of that. My experience was. That in two thousand and two, before I ever owned a property in this city. I went on the wait. And it was somewhat. Helpful to me to purchase a residence here at the town in two thousand and four. And I was on, at the time I went on the waitlist, the, the waitlist was eighty deep. Didn't think I'd ever come up to number one. But after thirteen years, I came up to number one on the waitlist. Thank you very much, and I got a slip, which I have for eight years. And in two thousand and twenty three. I sold my boat. I'm getting a little bit of age on me, so you know, that happens. And uh, I, it was the waitlist worked just fine, I think. I don't think you ought to change it.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else to public comment, comments, questions, concerns? Alrighty, I'm gonna close public comment and go to the board to deliberation. Started with Commissioner Lassiter the last time, so I'll start with myself. We'll continue to move down hopefully. Don't forget you again, but I'm on my best. Well, you, Commissioner Lassiter, I'll try my best. Jen, I appreciate you putting it together. I appreciate you doing the meeting as well. I attended it, showed up. You know, I thought it was a, a good way to halt the room, so to speak, without there being a contentious. You know, conversation, so I appreciate that. Um, I just, the very first sentence on your memo here says, while city staff has not received any complaints about the waitlist policy. I would have to say that's one hundred percent inaccurate. Um, it's not, I've heard it communicated at several commission meetings prior to even your arrival. There, the most, now just pulling up an email and the only reason why I have this email, I think I have a few more that go back even earlier than this. This email is from Terry Hall. It was February fifth, twenty twenty three, was sent to every single commissioner. Um, at that point in time, which was Hugh Conklin, who was serving as the mayor, Tom Needhammer, Commissioner Lassiter. Um, myself as the mayor pro temp at that time, Commissioner Moody and Michael Kane as a representative from city administration. Plain um, about the waitlist, so. I just have an issue with that because it sounds like the city commission is the one that is. Creating this contention and has this agenda of changing the policy. No, it's not that. It's the community members have brought it up multiple times. So moving on through the memo, I do appreciate the responses. Did you also get the emails that I received? I received two of them. There was one dated June twenty seventh and one dated June. Thirty, as both of them were received from Terry Hall.
Yes.
They're included in here as well. What page are they on? Cause he wanted me to make sure that they were included.
Don't, no, I, and they should, they should be included.
Okay.
Cause I did receive those emails.
Okay. And we can just confirm that I don't need your date. We don't have to actually go through and tear this apart tonight. I'll just make a side note. To confirm that Terry Hall's points were made. Cause I think on the June twenty seventh, I don't know if that email went to every, that went to Commissioner Pritchard, myself, yourself. Um, and some other random email that I don't know. And then the June thirtieth one, I think that went to. Commissioner Pritchard again, myself. And I wasn't aware that the commission out forward these, John, I'm gonna forward you these emails to make sure that the commission. As the whole commission has access to these emails as well. Um, there, oh, I just said it was a short, well, they're, they're little.
Okay, no worries.
Just with like recommendations pointed, there's, there's back on the policy. Um, I guess from my interpretation, they've been on the waiting list for quite some time. So. We, I just wanna verify that those emails are included in this memo. Um, me personally. I appreciate your guys' recommendation of, you know, the city staff au- authorized city. City commission authorized city staff to keep the existing waitlist policy in place. And I'm just gonna speak to being consistent. So when we created an STR ordinance. Um, we did community input meetings multiple times over, it was about a year and a half process. Um, it wasn't just a one and done, so to speak, community input session. Same thing with the bubblers, you know, Jack Lee, Jackie has shown up to multiple meetings. We had. Um, multiple discussions about it. The public came and addressed, you know, multiple times their concerns and perspectives with the city commission. Um, just going down the list, the Marina expansion project again, multiple community input sessions, not just a one and done. And then the most, another recent one was library development. There was at least three to four community import sessions with that as well. And so me personally, I think one and done is not doing due diligence. Um, that's just my perspective. It might be different amongst the other commissioners, but. I would hope that we would, we would want to do more than just one and being done with that. Um, to allow opportunity for maybe community members that weren't in town that day, um, that had. Pre, pre planned schedules, so on so forth. I hear it all the time, you know, I get told I. I'm limiting access, not allowing engagement, but I won't go toe to toe with anyone on what my actions have been the last four years to say. You have the most accessibility to your elected officials with the owl system. Um, you could watch it sitting at home. You can go back and watch meetings from two years ago now. Um, so I, my actions have always encouraged accessibility and engagement. Um, and I think one and done is just setting us up for not being consistent in how we've handled previous um, import sessions. So me personally, I don't think we're gonna have a policy change this year. Um, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to with a timeline, and that's what I talked to multiple times. Um, at the last commission meeting when this was a topic was there's, there's like a hard timeline when you guys send out everything. The invoices, so on so forth, so I don't think we're gonna be able to do our due diligence in having several community import sessions. And being able to make a policy change this year. Um, and I just wanted to run record saying that to calm some, you know, contention maybe on if there is a policy change happening. Here in the next couple of weeks, I just don't envision that happening. And then it, it was interesting, the survey highlights, so. The questions that you utilize, forty seven percent believe expanding the arena would improve fairness and accessibility. I agree with that wholeheartedly. Unfortunately, the, the commission has made a concept three approval process. They approved a concept. And I don't think this commission is in a mood from that. Um, I ran four years ago on against that Marina expansion. If you're running, I'm up for reelection. He's up for reelection as well. Um, there's a vacant seat right here as well. If you actively want to expand that Marina as big as possible. You should be campaigning aggressively like that. Um, four years ago, I was campaigning on what the community was speaking to and they did not want that expansion. And I think that's largely due to me getting elected and getting, so. I think there's an opportunity. I just don't understand why that was even a survey question since I believe we put that to bed about three years ago.
It was not a specific question. It was what do you think would help make the arena more fair and accessible?
Gotcha.
So that was a large majority of the responses were more slips made fair. If, if we don't have enough space, make fair.
Okay, an interesting statistic would we know would be to know how many people that completed the survey are current slip holders? That could create, you know, biased opinion perspective on that. And maybe having a metric percentage on how many of them are in the waiting list. Cause again, it's probably two different perspectives, right? Have you been waiting for twelve years to get a slip versus if you've had a slip for the last twelve years?
So just, I agree with you. Justin, sitting in here talking with people when they were doing it, it was interesting because I thought it would be. Two sides. They were pretty much all on the same, there were some who were like not happy about being on the waitlist, but the majority of the people on the waitlist. Agree with the waitlist as it is because when they get a slip, they don't wanna have to give it up either.
Right.
I, I, that wasn't what I.
Yeah, and I heard it from both sides too when I attended it, you know, and I got the follow up emails too. Um, I even got a few phone calls as well because two people that wanted to attend weren't in town that day. Um, and they were asking me if the city was sleeping again. I said, I hope they do, you know, I. I can't force them to do it, but I could just speak out of my perspective and I hope they do. Um, just so then they're being consistent in how they, you know, address community import sessions and other topics. The only thing is, I, I will put it out there. I, I guess I'll wait for this one. This is for further conversation. And it's just a thought process for the commission to take into consideration, but I'll wait until we have additional community uh, import sessions. That's all I have. I just wanna verify that those emails are included in here and uh, that's the only follow up notes that I have on this.
They should be, but I'd have to go through and double check.
I'm sorry.
Should, they should be. I would have to go back and like look at the email and then look at the responses because I just typed it in, so.
I just wanna make sure that this is accurate because if it's missed, this, this isn't accurate. And then, you know, I'm gonna get nailed to the wall for not having these emails included in the public. You know, information that the packet, so to speak. Um, and I wanna ensure that just like everyone that attended and filled out their pieces of paper. I wanna assure these individuals that emailed the commission or commissioners also be represented in here as well. And if they're not, this is not accurate.
And the online responses are in there.
Yeah, yep. Commission, will you?
Yeah, I said it before, I'll say it again, don't have a horse in the race in the Marina, um, don't have a boat, want a boat. Um, the uh, as far as, I, I thought it was very interesting and speaking with, you know, quite a few of uh. People that uh, have been on the wait, the waitlist and that even are on the waitress waitlist. That they, you know, completely supported and I, I guess. S- support doing nothing, doing nothing to it. So I, I would, I thought, I found it very interesting. Um, and, and to, you know, Tim's point, you know, this wasn't anything that this commission said, alright, we gotta squash this up. And get rid of this. It was, it was over, over times of discussions during everything that was going on with the Marina and everything like that. And uh, um, as far as. You can, you can take a horse and you can beat it to death and you can have as many meetings as you want and I, I respect that. I'm not saying I don't want another meeting on it, doesn't, uh, I, I, if it, if it wasn't so over resoundingly, you know. Um, the, the, the people have spoken. Um, it, it might be different. It was more of a fifty fifty, much like the SDR, you know, uh, that was a. You know, that was something that would, that warranted much more. Um, but again, I, I, I appreciate all, all the time and effort. I appreciate all the, that the boaters had had their input and everything and uh, I, you know, if, if, if. If the majority of them, uh, you know, eighty two percent are for leaving it how it is. Again, not trying to be honest with you, I have no, no desire to uh, to change it. It was basically trying to look at something that, you know. We've heard that it was broken. Obviously, the Marine was, Marina was very broken. We're finally getting that addressed. Um, so uh, going forward, uh, as far as the, you know, the questions. Found it very interesting about the, you know, the Marina expansion questions is that was put to bed a few years ago. There, you know, there, there will be no expansion out past the, the uh, the, the front and the, and the rocks and everything. And, you know, we, we said we were gonna live within uh, the phase three at Marina as it stood. And uh, so um, respecting those opinions. Um, it, it just is not really part of this, you know, for, for them to say that. Well, you know, the, the easy way to fix it would uh, would be, you know, blow off the Marina. Uh, yeah, they would have more slips and stuff, understood, but uh. As, as was found out in all those meetings and everything, um, the performers didn't even work. Because we weren't using all the numbers, uh, all costs, so uh. Bottom line is, I'll do whatever this commission wants to do. We can have another meeting, that's what the commission wants. And I have no problem in putting this to bed and saying, you know, it, it is what it is. The, the, the way this lives as it does and the people have spoken, so. There it is.
Commissioner Pritchard.
Um, again, thank you for all the hard work and, and collating it, um, I. There are two emails that Tim points out that were submitted. And they would have been submitted in advance of the Wednesday noon deadline for this packet. Um, and rightfully should have been included, uh, just as Ms. Palmer's. So I think that's an omission that needs to be fixed in the next packet. Um, beyond our, ourselves receiving each of them.
Except for we did.
Do we know that they're not there?
I have to go through and look at.
Looking at the agenda packet and I'm not seeing.
I think she's indicating that these emails should be under correspondence like Ms. Palmer's Marina.
Understood.
I said the one, the, the two emails you got. They are, okay, so it's one.
But they, they make different points. It, it, he, he makes different points and, and that's, you know, um.
So it would be one flaw. I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying.
However, like I'm simply saying, we had citizen correspondence on two occasions, neither of which made. The packet and I personally believe should have shown up in um, the correspondence.
I don't think it's gonna change the results.
I'm simply making a point of that it, it would. I would have expected, had I been that individual, that it would show up in correspondence. Simple point, both of those things. Um, and I no longer have a, a horse in the race either. Um, and to me, whether we change the policy, I guess, I, I mentioned previously. I think if someone's offered a slip. That should be it the one time, um, that not be given a chance. But then again, there may be reasons for it that I don't understand, but that's just a thought as to why we would. Um, do two, two bites of the, the apple. There is insatiable demand for marinas in north in Michigan, insatiable. You, you, you couldn't, you could build out to the middle of the lake maybe and, and you might satisfy it, perhaps. In this case, it is not a natural harbor. We have T doc damage or A doc, whichever way you wanna refer to it, every time there's a major event. Uh, and we have studies that go, that go way back that speak to the fact that it's not a natural harbor. Trying to attach things to the bottom of the lake, um, and the maintenance costs that goes along with floating docks. Need to be built into the budget. I mentioned last time and I'm gonna mention it again. That as a public good, that we have a, a boat launch that was identified. Hmm, ten years ago as needing to be repaired or replaced at the north end and expanded. In which case, if we're going to allocate city monies for boating activity. To serve the public good, the larger public good. Then I would suggest that we would need to prioritize it. We did not, we did not include it in the budget for this year. And then, and there's more, there's more to come. And I guess as, I'm sorry. Um, I, to me, if it took. That many years for John to get his, uh, finally moved to the top of the slip and, or list for his. It, it, I was kind of scratching my head as to why we are continuing to add to that list. At all and taking money for it. This is personal, this is personal question. Um, it's, it's not, not anything's gonna be satisfied anytime soon, but if willing, people are willing to pay, so be it. That's what I said.
Commissioner, fair.
The Marina itself, um. We're making lions or uh huge steps in improving that. However, um. In terms of this item, uh, the staff recommendation is no change to the policy. So I'm in favor of just moving forward with it, forward with it based on that. Um, and if the advisory body is something that wants to continue or has benefit. Then that should. To gain or to have an avenue for people to, to have some input into the process, so um, I'm in favor of. Moving forward with this non policy change. Leave it as is.
Commissioner, Lassiter.
Yeah, I think, you know, the uh, age of people. We're, we're good with it. It sounded like the resounding response that we received was leave it as it is. People seem to be happy with it and staff is happy with it, the public's happy with it. Uh, there's a lot of opportunity to weigh in on that public. Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with the, you two bites at the apple, you're at the top of the waitlist. Nobody else seems to have a problem with it in the sense. It's a couple of us, but uh, so with that, I'd agree with Bob, I'm good with. Even as it is, if that's what the vote goes.
Alright, thank you, Jeff. Alright, so.
Mayor, can I ask a question? What, what would be some, I guess I'd be curious to know from the voting community. Why would you get, why would you need two? Why would you need a second opportunity, uh, if you've been waiting all these years?
It says here that this approach provides flexibility for those facing unexpected circumstances while. Still ensuring movement on the waitlist. For example, someone who has waited twenty years should not lose their seniority. After single refusal due to temporary setback.
What number are you?
Uh, page eight one.
The sequence is up, okay.
So, I, I'm not trying to speak for the voting community in that, but what I'm assuming is if there was a situation where. They were self, oh, maybe buying a new boat, something like that and. Credit down one time, so next year comes around, they purchase a new boat, um, they would have an opportunity, um. But I don't want to speak for the voting.
That's how it was.
Okay, well, it, it, it does not work that way at any other Marina, I can tell you that. Uh, from personal experience, you either pay up or you are. That's it. Um, and I also, I guess, when I come back on your comment, Tim, about the percentages here, I think. Um, it. It, 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 it could be deserving of further conversation in the community, but I guess I can, I can go with leaving it alone. I don't understand though, why we would continue. To add people to a list that.
Yeah, so that puts us in a position where, what do we want to do next? I mean, me personally, I think. Another community input session, even two, um, is needed just to show face for consistency. Um, I'm, but I'm not an advocate for wasting time. I, I'm not saying we should do two more community input sessions. Cause it's gonna change results. Um, it's just on a principle of consistency and doing what we've um consistently done. Um. I could see this getting torn apart, you know, potentially in the future of, well, who was the percentage on this and. Why did I not have an opportunity? You guys only did one and done, so. I'm not advocating for additional community inputs. Else, I'm doing it from a perspective of just being consistent. Um, I sat on that side four years ago, being very, very consistent and holding accountability. And leadership's inconsistency, so I'm not putting myself in that position. Go ahead.
Hey, well, and I, I, I would, I would just say, uh, it's him that would, you know, there has been. There has not only been one, one bite at this has been on the agenda, you know, for a, a few months, so there's been. The opportunity to, you know, for people to express themselves. Was there, was there. Only one, you know, e- extra official meeting outside of the meeting? Yes. But I, I guess what I would do is I, I would make a motion to consider the recognition from the executive assistant Jenny's. To authorize the city staff to keep the existing waitlist policy in place as it is currently written. But. To be looked at on a yearly basis and possibly revised.
Perfect, support. Another discussion. Roll call please, Jessica.
Why are we? I just, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I, I'd like to know why. We're trying to legislate every piece of this policy when the staff has indicated. There's no change needed now. I would suspect if there was a change needed in the future, that would bubble up from staff. I don't know why we're trying to. Um, micromanage this process.
I don't envision it as micromanaging it, but that's just my perspective.
Well, I, I don't believe the motion that I, that I spoke about was micromanaging. All I was saying was that, you know, it's. Yeah, in, in full support of doing this, but you know, policies change, so.
To me, it shows space on people that would be upset that we just didn't want to, so it's enough for me to support it. Any other discussion before roll call? Roll call is Jessica.
Richard.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nemechek.
Hi.
Farrell.
Nate.
Moody. The motion's carried.
Alrighty, moving on to agenda item nine A.
Good evening, just a quick memo here, um, Granicus. Uh, address identification renewal, uh, drafted a memo. In July twenty twenty-one, the city commission approved a one-year contact, contract with Granicus to pro- provide. Short-term rental address identification services. Uh, this contract was renewed for one-year periods in July twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four for the cost of. Sixty-seven, forty, fifty, seven thousand seventy-eight, six, thirty, seventy-four, thirty-two, twenty-three respectively. The current contract expires, expires July thirteenth of twenty twenty-five. Um, the address identification service is seen as a necessary tool. For successfully administering the city short-term licensing ordinance. The proposal from Granicus for a one-year contract based, is based on two hundred and twenty-one listings for a price of eight thousand. One hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, which is thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents per listing. This is an increase of three dollars and thirty-six cents per listing. Um, which is a total increase of seven hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-six cents over the last year's contract. It should be noted that the contract is still based on the two hundred and twenty-one listings, which has remained unchanged since the original contract. Within Boeing City, there are currently over four hundred short-term rental listings. Given a new provider, um, would, would base a contract on the current cost and the current number of listings. And, and all the others that have been contacted require multiple-year contracts. No other provider could even come close to competing with the price and service that's provided by Granicus at this time. Funds for the expenditure have been allocated in this year's budget in the planning department contracted services line item. Um, and obviously, my recommendation would be to approve the proposal for Granicus. Uh, for a one-year contract for short-term rental address identification services. In the total amount of eight thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Thank you, sir. Uh, going to the public comment questions, concerns. Our closing public comment, going to the board, we'll start with Commissioner Moody and just continue to move down the line.
Yeah, um, that, that, I'm finally Kyle, my only question was, uh, what's our, um. What is the renewal rate, yearly renewal rate again?
Hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Hundred and seventy-five, okay, so. So we're still, we're, we're still fine and, and uh. I guess all I would want to make sure is that we're still finding the fees, not only to them, but the fees that go into your position, you know, the planning. The, the planning, uh, position, uh, that we covered first time and we can't, we, we can't just make these willy-nilly anyhow. No, oh, I, I'd like to hear thousand dollars, at least it does work out. Uh, so, but mainly just so we have the money to cover the, the costs involved. I appreciate that doing you and John will make sure that these are stayed on top of. But other than that, it, you know, they've done a fine service for us and I, you know, I'm in full support of this.
I miss book already, it's two seventy-five renewal.
But it's good for two years, right?
The initial contract, the initial license is three hundred. The renewal is two seventy-five yearly after the remainder of that year plus two years. So the more than covers.
Alright, thanks.
Commissioner, Richard.
So if they actually charged us for the number of listings. Our actual bill would be just under fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
And they're just nice guys.
We continued the contract as long as you communicate with them and work, work with them. They're pretty good at keeping your price there. They had a really good relationship with, with Scott.
Well, they're a great company, don't get me wrong. And then they're used across America. I just, that just. It's pretty, it's pretty great.
Well, they're hopeful that we're gonna utilize other services as well.
Well, that's where it was gonna go next.
And they are very good services, but I don't.
I'm sorry?
There, there are very good services that they offer, but I don't have any of those submitted in this.
Okay, cause that was gonna be my question is that we chose a, um, a limited level of service. And, and I, I would love to hear more about what else they can offer us that will help us manage this. Um, so I'm in support of the renewal of their contract. I gotta admit that. I am absolutely alarmed to hear that there are four hundred S T Rs now in the city. And I would like to ask that we get, we, the commission, receive a similar report. To that which we achieved, we received from Mister, uh, Director McPherson. Um, it was last in December of twenty twenty-two. And it was agenda item eight A, and it was very comprehensive because at that time. Um, and even Scott expressed concern about the impact. In particularly in the traditional residential neighborhood of what the impact would be. We need to understand that in December of twenty twenty-one, there were a hundred and forty-one throughout the whole city. Uh, and sixty-four in the traditional, um, residential area and. We left off in twenty-two that it was a hundred and seventy-six and eighty-nine and I would like to see, um. You, we, we work on getting a very similar comprehensive report. At that time, um, there were seven percent at least of the T R D. The traditional residential neighborhood was, um, taken up in, if I, short-term rentals. And the, and, and the reason I, I'm gonna continue to beat this drum is that we can, we can go to the ends of the earth. To add housing units to only then get six steps backwards because every, you know, there continues to be. Conversion. And in twenty twenty-two, just to make feel, in, in Scott's report. He said of the traditional residential neighborhood, we had thirteen hundred and three dwelling units. With the lowest half, with the average S E V for the T R D, S E V of eighty-nine thousand. And we know what it is today. So I'm requesting on my behalf and I'm looking for support from this commission. That we receive, well, actually, I don't know that we should have to request. It would be nice if it was just in a regular event. That we have reported to us what the status is of, um, the short-term rental licensing throughout the city. I believe the cap, what was in our cap at that time, hundred and thirty?
It still is, yeah.
Minus, minus A, ADUs in the T R D cap. That's a big increase.
Hundred and thirty to four hundred, minus ADUs in personal property.
Yeah, right, which we're, we're not regularly, but the other thing that. So the four, the four hundred is, is skewed in and of itself though, Kyle, right? Because that's, they do. That, that's their entire search. The, it, it's not how many, so you could have your place listed on Airbnb, VRBO. Um, come and get it dot com, you know, whatever, you know, it's, so I, I mean, it's all, then. There, there's multiple listings, so it's not that there's four hundred S T Rs out.
They're, um, they join them, yeah, they join them based on. VRBO and Airbnb, it'll only show up as one.
I'd like clarity, is, are there four hundred S T R listings or Airbnb listings in Boeing City or not?
Yes.
There are now, right, because that wasn't how, that wasn't, that information was mean. Uh, portrayed in the beginning, it, they, they, they. They, they tried to identify them all, but there wasn't.
Some are duplicates. Yeah, they don't match up, they don't.
So all I'm saying is not four hundred, somewhere between two twenty-one and four.
So to, to your point, Marty, I think that, and, and it's well taken, one of their services. And then, and the point in this contract, as far as their product description. Is de-duplication of listings and that's included. So I'm looking for, uh, into unique units and I guess that's, that's part of the report that I am acutely interested in hearing.
Well, and we do get a little bit of an updated report directly from them. At least, does it, do you not get it in your email? They, they, we get stuff from Granicus and uh.
Weekly, monthly.
This is the report we got twenty twenty-two from Mr. Kane and Mr. McPherson. This is a report. Related to the cap, so I guess, I think it's worthwhile for the sake of our citizens. That we know exactly where we stand and we get a regular orderly report.
I think, I think the only thing to clarify there too is that, you know, we've been without. We've been without, I mean, Kyle's been, you know, flying on his own, so it, it, I, I think that's sort of why we haven't got.
Scott left in December twenty twenty-four.
I know, but Scott also was lately checking out.
I know you can do it for us, right?
Could possibly.
Yeah.
Next few weeks ago.
I'm in favor of moving forward with the Granicus contractor renewal.
Thank you.
I am also in favor of moving forward on agenda item nine A. I'll make a recommendation that the city commission approve the proposal for granting. For a one-year contract for short-term rental address identification services for grand total. Of eight thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Support further.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nemechek.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Motion's carried.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Moving on to nine B.
Okay, um, so the next one, seasonal rates. When we last had this conversation, we were made aware, we cannot raise rates till twenty twenty-seven. Um, however, I did speak with Jeremy and the standard of practice is to charge seasonal based on slip length. Versus boat length. Um, when you're charging by boat length, you're leaving money on the table because that flip could have been rented. So propose that you go to slip length versus boat length.
Alright, thank you, ma'am, any published comment, questions, concerns? Just come up to the podium, say name and address, please.
Just like my comment about that, I'm a little concerned about the idea of just raising the rates. Particularly strictly on the basis of trying to increase revenues. And, and I think it's kind of a short-sighted process. The leaving money on the table, um, makes the assumption that we've got, we've got a lot of. Random slips that are, that are big slips. It, it makes the assumption that we're gonna rent those slips to fifty-foot boats. And it's probably not the case. I think past history would show, and if you, you know, you pull up the records of who's been here and how much they've been charged or what size boats have been here. There's, the, all those slips have not been full of fifty-foot boats. So right now you're raising the rates. And then I'm not sure if anybody ran the numbers to see exactly what the total revenue will be for that.
Fifteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. But again, what we're doing is raising these rates without really. Improving a lot of things in the Marine and I know you folks sit here. And talk about some of the improvements that have been made and there's been a lot of money spent. And the D doc, uh, situation is beautiful, uh, uh, is wonderful. However, uh, C doc and E doc, which I know you're gonna talk about later, are in bad shape. The wave attenuators are failing, they're not adequately, those brand new slips in, in the brand new D doc, it's just not. Um, the showers are in bad shape, the bathrooms are in bad shape. There's no boater's lounge, that's typical of a lot of Marines. So these are kind of things that I think boaters are going to look at. In the future and I, and I worry that we're gonna price ourselves right out of the game. Sandy said earlier, we've got all these boaters that are just looking for a place to link. And some of that, that, that's, that's active to a certain extent, but I think at some point, if we just keep raising the rates. I think you're gonna lose people. Oh, not saying everybody's just gonna turn their back this year, but I, I have a concern about. That if we continue to raise the rates, then I think some of the voters are gonna start shining away. Because we don't have first-class facilities. If we have the first-class D doc, I can tell you that, cuz I've used it, and it's one. But we don't have first-class facilities, um. And when we get there, I think people will be a lot more apt to say, hey, I'm willing to pay. And I realize this is just the seasonal, the seasonal boat, but, um. And there's so many people on that list, but if you start looking at. A thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, maybe even two thousand dollars per boat increase. I think some of those people are gonna say, that, you know, is it worth it to do that? Now, maybe, maybe that's the intent, let's get through the list. But if it's not the intent, then, uh, I think at some point we may price ourselves out of the game. The other thing is, I think, when we look at this and talk about this kind of stuff, I think, um. That the Marina, the Boise Marina is not, is not. Being respected by a lot of people in the board of the community. And I think that I really believe that some of that starts right here. Because there's so much negative talk about the Marine and let's make the boaters pay for it and, and it, it. And I've set the back on a lot of these discussions. And it feels like people are pointing fingers at the boaters going, they're the scourge of the earth, let's, let's get them. That's what it kind of feels, because they're the ones that are causing the problems, they're the ones that gotta pay, they're the ones, hey, why do we have a thing to begin with? And I don't think that, that this commission is selling the idea that there's a lot of value to them, rent to the city. And we've had this discussion with Mayor earlier, made that point. That there's a lot of economic value to that brand, it brings in a lot of money to the city. And I don't think that those kind of things are being back to the community, those kind of, uh. Commitments and arguments are being brought back to the people that are kind of anti-marine. And as I stand here, I'd like to say, hey, I love the Marine and I wanna support and I wanna be a part of it. And I wanna do whatever I can to help. But I just want, and I'm on the list, I may never get there, but I've, I have those concerns about pricing ourselves, I was thinking.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other public comment, questions, concerns? Alright, in the close public count and go to the board deliberation, we'll start with Commissioner Pritchard as we move on, Dan.
Interesting, uh, interesting comments. I, I support the, the suggestion of the seasonal rates tied to length. It's what Bay Marina or Advanced Marina, uh, does today, um. And yes, they did price me out of the market and it went from seventeen hundred for a twenty-foot ski boat. Uh, to actually started a little bit lower than that, um, to eighteen hundred, to the low two thousands. To four thousand dollars. And my facilities were, uh, porta-potties basically in the building. So I, I'm, I'm struggling with some of the comments. It, it, we're tasked with being good financial stewards. And it is, it, it, it is an enterprise that needs some serious, serious investment. That was identified, like I said, in the survey of all the Michigan harbors done by Michigan D N R. And it laid out the expenditures that needed to be, um, made over the next fifteen, twenty years. And we are a long, long way, um, from that and we've, and we've got a lot to do. I support this, this is the same as other, uh, Marines do in terms of the length. I appreciate what you're saying about the E doc, um, currently or was, I don't, I don't know future, but they used to split the two. Um, whether, how that would come into play, I'm not sure, but, um. You wanna slip and it's a fifty-footer available and you're willing to pay the price and your boat's thirty foot, thirty-two foot long or your yacht. Because a yacht's technically thirty-two feet, then so be it. Um, so I, it, it is commercial business practice throughout this area. Five lengths and I appreciate you bringing it forward, thank you.
Commissioner.
I've read the material, uh, Jen, thank you for your diligence, um, and. The methodology to create is, has to be consistent and, uh, we have to be consistent in that, in that process. So, uh, and I'm in support of being consistent and having a methodology we can stand behind, so, thank you.
Your show last week.
Yeah, um. I, I appreciate Jeff's comments, you know, he, he's usually a very good common sense guy, makes a lot of sense, but, um. I think that, uh, I. Know Tom Cannon or Nate Short, and he's a very common sense guy also, and if you're there, you seem to be working for them. Uh, and I like the idea that they use the, uh, being able to, if you have extra room in there, put kayaks or, you know. Jet skis or whatever else you can, you can cram in that spot, um, to make it more, uh, built up and user-friendly. Uh, makes sense, so I guess I'm, I'm supportive of it too, so.
Good. Alright, um, I'm in full support, I understand the concerns that Jeff has, um, they're. They're valid concerns, um, unfortunately with the situation that we are dealing with. The, it's, it's important for this commission to make sure that we're generating enough revenue. And everyone talks about, that's an enterprise fund and it's funny, me and John just talked before this meeting, he's like. City doesn't, the scale isn't one enterprise fund, Marina's not one of them, I'm like, well, for four years. City manager said it's enterprise fund and, you know, the definition of enterprise fund is supposed to be self-sustaining, not subsidized through the general fund. Through taxpayers and, um, so it'll be interesting to find out if it truly is defined as an enterprise fund. But that's the intention and that's what's been communicated to this commission, that's what's been communicated to the public. And I want there to be five-star review conditions on D doc, on A doc, on B doc, with C doc. So on, so, I want five-star reviews on the, you know, showers and I want there to be a boater's lounge, so on, so forth. That's gonna be great for the community, but it has to come from an enterprise fund and it has to be self-sustainable. It should not be a subsidized asset, it shouldn't be. And I think even the previous city manager understood that as well. And that's why he made the changes he made decades ago to structure these funds the way that they work. Cause he made a lot of changes when he came to the city, um, and that's the intention behind those changes that he made decades ago. And it's an unfortunate situation that we're in and, you know, it's. I'm gonna take flat for it and there's gonna be this, you know, manipulated context, you know, narrative out there that. The commission's probably doing this just to try and get through the waiting list, that's not the case. The intent from me's perspective is you have an asset that's deteriorating. We're not generating enough revenue to even be able to go through a process of conducting proper preventative maintenance. We get reports from state agencies that lend us the money saying, hey, you guys. Stuff longevity is twenty-five years, you're approaching thirty years on it, it's deteriorating. Um, this makes sense and if we didn't do this, I don't think it would be in the best interest of the community. I don't even think it would be in the best interest of the boating community. I think the boating community is against rate increases, but they also want five-star review assets and conditions. And it's gonna be a very similar conversation that we're gonna roll into with the airport as well. It's like, you know, unfortunately, when I took this seat four years ago, we didn't have a brand-new five-point-eight-million-dollar Marina. Um, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, like this has lost funding for the waterway grant commission. That's false, that's completely false, um, misinformation. But with that being said, I know that information's out there, so me personally, I support it, it makes sense. It's what needs to be done for the boating community, um, and it's what needs to be done for the residents of this community. We have to get this thing in a position where it's generating enough revenue, um, so it can be self-sustainable. And so we don't ever get here again, so the boating community don't have to deal with this again, again. The residents don't have to deal with this topic being so contentious again, um, I think it's the best course, so. Commissioner.
Uh, I agree with everything what was said there, I, I, I respect the, uh, the comments made. I, I think it, this, the, the, uh, second paragraph was where, you know, once again. The, the. The city failed over the last twenty years. And we had, we had the, uh, representatives here from, you know, the D N R and waterways. And, uh, you know, so Jeremy himself. That the standard practice of all state-operated harbors and most brand-in-aid harbors. Is to charge seasonal slip holders based on the length of the slip rather than the boat. This should have been being done for the last twenty years, it hasn't been done. And once again, this is just another catch-up that we're playing on this Marina. When if, if all these things would have been being done that we've discussed over, you know, four years. We wouldn't be in the boat that we're in, but I'm, but, but we are. Uh, so, uh, that's, you know, I, I, I'm in full support of this. I, I respect the comment, uh, um, about, you know, the, the, the large slips. I would see those, talking to you, Jen, I would see those as, you know, if those are being used. As a, you know, fifty-foot slip by two twenty-five-foot boats, they're being charged as a two-twenty-five-foot boats. Or a thirty-foot and a twenty-foot boat, I, I'm, I'm not making up yours or Ralph's rules. I'm, I'm asking the question that, you know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't see. You know, Ralph put a twenty-two-foot boat boat in a fifty-foot slip and going there, you're charged, you're being charged for fifty-foot.
Thought process is to start with the smallest slip available on a large dock.
Yes.
Put the smallest large dock boat in there.
Yeah.
Work my way up, I went through, I looked at the lengths of the boats.
Yep.
And work that way up. And if they wanna, if they wanna bigger slip because they wanna be in a specific spot.
So be it. No, I, I, I think that all I was saying is that I, I, I think it, I think it makes sense and, uh, I, I don't have a problem. I, I, I respect it, I respect the due diligence put into it. Again, it, you know, it's unfortunately just a fail that this city, uh, it did over the last twenty years. And now, you know, hopefully we can get all these hills wronged and get this thing on a, on a, on a, on a course. As Tim just said that, you know, five, ten years from now, it isn't this free discussion. It's just being taken care of, it's being taken care of with the C I P, which we've just, you know, C B I, uh, that we, you know, discussed. So, you know, uh, so many times and that we're working diligently on getting it placed instead of it first. Get tired, your turn, Sam.
Then you, you already went, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bottom line is, I, I appreciate you doing the math, it's fifteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars that we're leaving on the table, so to speak, this year. And, you know, if that was last year's was the same, that's thirty-one thousand, that's about half of replacement of.
E D.
E D, there you go. So if you want a brand-new E doc, I'm glad we weren't doing this the last three years, we paid for it right there. So I'll make a motion that the City Commission approve changing the seasonal slip fee structure from charging by boat length. To charging by slip length effective beginning the twenty twenty-six boating season. Support further discussion.
I would only say this and, and I'm willing to share this with you, Jeff, or anyone else, it's a summation. I'm, I misspoke myself, I said nineteen ninety-nine, it was two, they, they've been doing, the D N R's been doing regular surveys. Our own Bar Brooks filled out the response and this data that comes from that time. And as we know, a dollar doesn't go anywhere, at that time, there was a forecast of a million five. In the neck, in, in, within the five years, so twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. That would have gotten us up to speed on, on docks and some structures. So if you'd like, if you'd like to see what it was, cuz what we've learned, everything's tripled and quadrupled since.
Thanks.
So I'd be happy, if you give me your email, I'll send you the whole report. Thanks.
Uh. Roll call please, Jessica.
Nemechek.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
The motion's carried.
Thank you, Jenna, I appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item nine C.
Just gonna keep standing here for the next.
Yeah, um, this one, Jen, I think everyone on the commission is fully aware. Um, we've gone this way, so I'll just start with myself and move back this way again. Um. I'm in support of this resolution, well, I'll say this first, after the last special meeting with John. I called upon after that meeting, left my voicemail. Um, and then ultimately got ahold of him, he called me back even later that day or the next day and I was like, hey, John. Um, that resolution that we just talked about, make sure you send that to the city attorney to get his eyes on it, his thumbs up. And any suggestion edits, um, before it comes to the City Commission, that way it will help take care of a lot of debating. And make it a more progressive conversation. So thank God John took my recommendation and you forward that resolution to the city attorney. City attorney did have one edit suggestion, I believe it was line item number three that was edited, the resolution. Um, and so, I mean, where I'm at on this, I can support it. But I'm also not gonna die on this hill and the reason why is because I make myself as available as possible. Any special meeting, I'll be here, I'm available any day of the week, any time of the week. I consistently move things around on my personal schedule to make myself available for special meetings, so. I will continue to do that, if this doesn't get passed, I don't think we're gonna run into a scenario where it's gonna hem up too much stuff. I would just hate for that scenario to actually pop up if it could be prevented, um. So this, and internally, there were some conversations about how this resolution was. And I'll, I'll just go on record right now in this anticipation that this was not about excluding the. And I'll I'll just go on record right now in this anticipation that this was not about excluding the public. Um, I could sit, all the change, the best practices that I've helped implement over the last four years to increase engagement. Increase accessibility, city government and advocate with resolutions to hold administration and the commission accountable to follow up with community residents questions and correspondence. Just like Steve's question um, from last week. Um, so. This was not to eliminate public input or engagement. I understand what the intention was here, so I could support it, but I'm also not gonna die in the hello grip. Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, no, we talked about it at the last meeting. It's brought up, but you know. To say, you know, look, I think that we need to have an amount, uh, you know, the the grand overall amount. Um, I not in support of. I mean, I think that, you know, there needs to be an amount inserted in here of, you know, my suggestion at the last meeting was twenty five thousand dollars. At least at that, you know, it's with, there isn't all these last minutes, you know. Scrambling around if we get the opportunity that we had on Pine Street, you know, it was a no brainer. And so that that the city manager is, you know, in the uh, in the position of. Uh, understanding the no brainer, being able to act. Uh, in the city's best interest. So I still believe that there should be a cap like that on there. Um, uh, with with total, total respect of uh, uh, moving quickly. If it was a bigger ask, again, you know. We mobilized quite quickly and and got it done. Uh, not because everybody wanted to or anything like that, but you know, it's what we were elected to do, so. Uh, I agree with you on that part. Um, so that that would be my only change is that I think it needs to have. And and a cap amount and that if it was over, we would need to discuss.
Commissioner Pritchard?
The uh, resolution that's referenced, excuse me, the motion that was referenced, is referenced. Was specifically for the city water valve and asbestos. Transite pipe removal, period. It doesn't, it is not appropriate or legal, in my opinion, to be using that resolution for this discussion. We, it is unbudgeted. It is not, and and these are not funds that. That we have. We've been. We don't have, we need visibility and fiscal responsibility here. And so first and foremost. The motion that's being referenced, the scope was specifically the city water valve at. Lincoln and High and transite pipes. And it was said at that time, we weren't really sure what else we were gonna run into. So I I personally object to that. Um, I don't think, uh, uh, this is, I think this is a motion kind of action. Um, there, the the community deserves to know. Um, how people come down on boats and we need to be able to um, track that in our fiscal responsibility. The, so again, the authorization was limited to replace aging water in infrastructure as part of contract one. And goes on to say the total unbudgeted cost is estimated at eight hundred and sixty six thousand. And we're talking about a million five here. I believe it needs to be a separate motion that this commission votes on and with Marty, if we are going to. Exceed the city charter. Uh, which is emergencies at ten thousand, then we need to have a serious conversation about that. There's a reason for that. Um, I would suggest that in a project like the one we have going on. I can see where someone would run into, could possibly run into something underground that wasn't anticipated. In which case they probably have to do some design engineering and go get some materials and that we certainly would have time then. You know, that that period of time of eighteen hours to schedule a special session. We did the last time, get her done in twenty minutes and out the door. I I I I absolutely do not support. Um, giving authorization of an open checkbook of fifty thousand dollars um, in this, in this. Case. The words also were for additional road repairs or grading. Not governed by the clean water state revolving fund. And I'll bet you, uh, you talk to a few folks that are sitting out there in the community who've been. Uh, without paved roads for. Years, they'd be kinda unhappy um, about us moving forward, particularly using the case in point, Allen Street and others. Your street, Spring Street. So I think it's irresponsible, fiscally irresponsible. Uh, it's unbudgeted and without knowing the impact. And how much it piled up, I am absolutely not in favor of this.
Commissioner Farrell?
This gave me heartburn when I looked at the occurrence and then I looked at the open line of capital of one point five million cap. Um, and I don't think we as commissioners can ever get our responsibility. To control the checkbook for items like this. Uh. The city manager has up to ten thousand dollar in in spending limit. Um, I think. Given what we're seeing in terms of cost, um, maybe we need to look at at that piece, but. To blanketly lay out fifty thousand per occurrence up to one and a half million is irresponsible. Thank you.
Commissioner Lassiter?
Yeah, I I agree with Bob on that. I guess one question I had. How how would this, what what does this look like? Is this like? Elmer says, oh man, we ran into another problem down in Pine Street. We we need to get this fixed and can we do this today? Is that kinda how that would?
Correct. And that's why it played out. So this wouldn't have anything to do with, they have nothing to do with the S R W M contract. It is. Uh, the Pine Street's a good example. It's kind of a throwback was. Uh, and it. Mr. Arnie and I walked it afterwards and we. Were kind of surprised that it was going to just be dispatched, quote, work on this road or when the hills went down. We looked at it and said, well. We need to understand what your plan is because where they graded to. And they weren't even going to address certain sections down the road on top of them. And they were gonna be doing it right then. Uh, Mr. Arnie practically would have talked to them and he would have been, but after the weekend. We even quoted until late in the day of exactly, they told us what the fund was, it was twenty thousand on that. Like. I'm not gonna read something and how it was, Mr. Arnie would have been fully what was gonna happen. So that particular issue is. We would, we would have ended up with a, a new section to the pavement with some substandard sections. Kind of sprawled around it. So what, but then what we needed to confirm was they were gonna take it all the way out front and then part of. Some say, thank you. Part of that paper on there to to. Refer that whole area and then quote that we were getting, if it, this was gonna be standardized, going to bring the crew back after the robbery there. It's sixty thousand dollars. So. It it really was, everyone could agree this was kind of a no brainer opportunity. And the intent on this is not just to. Which is why that takes three people to mount their head on this, is if another opportunity comes up. And again, this is not a, a help for me either. What I do is expedient, we've talked about expedient process, capitalize on it. And I expressed that to Mr. Cross, who are the, uh, council legal counsel. And he suggested, okay, yeah, we we get it. Uh, but again. Most of you are available. We need an eighteen hour, whatever call, especially me, as a mayor stated, he's available on the spot that we needed. So. We can. Not doing this, it just means that we need to have a presence of mind that if it comes up. Mr. Arnie and I will accelerate the, the process, the decisions we get into, uh. Very specifically. And you keep it on. So, but just recognize that there may be something, and that may never happen, may never happen. It's like a kid's. There may be a time when, you know, once, we we just missed it. And then if we wanna go back, try to do again, it is possible even more. But again, this would be something. To have a place, and if come, happens again, what it do with the, the mine.
Okay. This is made up of this, make sure this is.
This area, yeah.
Yes. Good, thanks.
Well. All right. Well, I'll make a motion just in the light of timing. It's ten oh two P M. I'll make a motion that the city commission adopt the resolution as presented to authorize and city manager, city clerk treasurer. Director of Public Works and Utilities to approve non cleaning water, water state revolving fund. Road repairs or grading work not to exceed a total of ten thousand dollars. Where is this?
Damn, that's what we're at. Well, Dennis, basically what his authority is.
Right.
I thought we changed, trying to change it.
I mean, I could do twenty five thousand, but I feel like we're gonna be here for another fifteen minutes arguing over it. So I just did ten just to. For. Further discussion?
So just to be clear.
We're not draining.
We're. Making a motion for a policy that currently exists, just to be clear. So to me, the. The motion lacks logic or or appropriateness here. The what's before us.
Do you want a friendly amendment?
Yeah, do you want a friendly amendment? The other day I watched you make it, turn down a motion, then make a motion. That was in regards to John's appointment. So whatever friendly amendment you you would like to make. So we can move on to the next topic and all here.
The only amendment that I would make is that it's not necessary.
Right, okay. Then I'll make a motion. I'll rescind that motion. Well, you can't because he supported it already. So let's go through this whole process to satisfy you. Uh, roll call please Jessica.
Uh, Farrell.
Nick.
Moody.
Nick.
Richard.
Nick.
Lassiter.
Nick.
Nemecheck.
Nick. There we go. Let's move on. Nine D.
Still here.
All right, Jen, take us away on nine D.
I'm done, I'm done. Okay, so this is it. Um, like we've been discussing. E dock has been very smart condition. We put a piece on there to get us through this season. Um, commission had. Talked about putting it out to bid. Um, F D S was the sole bidder. For this, this project out here. So I just went to them to see what they had as a quote. Um, put it back to the original footprint. So it has the four finger piers, same length. We can still put two small boats per. So we have sixteen spaces out there. Um, his cost came to. The new dock will be sixty eight thousand and then disposal will be an additional ninety four hundred. Um, I did speak with city staff about. Removal on our own because that would be an optional price. However, they said we would have to rent equipment to haul it and get rid of it. Um. I would say we just. Go for them removing it as well.
Thank you, Jen. Public comment, questions, concerns? One of the podium statement and address, please.
Don Reedy, uh, two twenty five West Cedar. We actually are on E dock and I have to tell you, it is ten times better than what was there last year. And it seems in pretty decent shape um, to last more than just this summer. Um, but if you try to place that, what happened to the plan that was gonna turn it and have additional slips in the same? You know, not extending off to the right of the marina is my question. Um, because if you are gonna replace it. That's why. And personally. I think the dock is. Pretty nice, to be honest with you. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any other public comment, questions, concerns? All right, closing public comment going to the board for deliberation. We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Pritchard and move down this way this time.
Um, just to respond to Dan, one of the, the things that came out when we were, we were offered a solution. It was grave concern about the flotation device that's underneath. And then any wave events or what have you that would bring it down. Um, and that would wreck it. And of course, the water levels. Are are lovely as well. The numbers are big. Um, we had thought, we had heard back then that that it was fifty five thousand. Um. And of course, now this is a real, real number. Um. They, it says their completion of the dock depends on favorable weather con- con- conditions. I guess a question, you know, how how comfortable are they with this June one date? Because they have seasonal outages that they have to between spawning and other things that they, that they, they can't, they can't do anything. So what was your feeling on that?
Uh, I think he felt pretty confident with the June first. Um, which is why he pushed it out to June first. And he did also suggest potentially working, uh. Trey at Mobile Metalwork.
Yep.
Um, potentially saying maybe they could put the dock in once it was built. Um, to speed that up in case they are, I just put it in and started June first.
The reservation on that, and I I I did had one small personal job with Trey and he's fantastic with his, his mobile bit. Then what, what happens to? The warranty because of the, the most critical thing with these flotation docks is that the chaining to the bottom and we. Don't have and should have and is in their warranties, you know, F D S's warranties from the past, is someone trained in this community. Um, ideally or higher build into our budget for them to come after every major wave, wave event and for sure in the spring and for sure in the fall. But to be able to reset these dots so that we don't end up with. The twisting. So that's a concern, you know.
Colleen said, unfortunately, he's not able to attend tonight, but he would be available tomorrow morning to answer questions if we wanted to bring questions back.
Yeah, well, I would be, I would be, I I I really wanna see us get this, this moving forward and get on their calendar. So I s- I I support at the uh. Full amount.
Uh, we need to move it. Uh, yeah, again, I appreciate the comment, uh, narrative, uh. But if it was the, uh. You know, brought that it's, uh, you know, it's not gonna last.
Yeah, we were figuring it out.
Yeah, so, um, you know, and you know, just to move the rest of this. Uh, the way that we thought we were moving it in the beginning, um, I think it's, uh, it it. The cost isn't gonna get any cheaper tomorrow and. And to do it, and uh, to get it fixed, to get it repaired in a good way that it should be and. Get this marina moving out and and living on its own. So I'm, I'm in full support.
All right, I'm also in full support. It is a little higher than that fifty five thousand that we talked about at that special meeting when.
He did say, you know, that was just a number.
Yeah.
Didn't put anything on paper, so.
Yeah. Um, but I went through it. Um, it's not ridiculous compared to the price per square foot and the D dock that he just did for us this word in line, so. Um, I'm in full su- full support. Shouldn't be interesting to see what the budget looks like going into next year, because this was another seventy seven thousand, four hundred dollars that we were not anticipating this year, but we will be spending. We gotta continue to rip the bandaid off, so to speak, so. That's for Lassiter.
Yeah, again, I mean, the, the, the idea to. Uh, nurse it long for this season was really, that was just the plan that we went with, uh, this spring. So. Yeah, I mean, to replace it, have it all brand new. Uh, June first, I think is great. Again, you know, you're right, it's not gonna get any cheaper. So I'm in full support.
Commissioner Farrell?
When we had the uh, meeting, um. I know that I at least had the conversation with Ab and Marsh um, about emulating the um. The change planned on alternate three, um, as opposed to just rebuilding the four finger pier. Um, because. Based on where the wave attenuation is, while we couldn't build it the full distance out. We can phase it in and build it out most of that way, according to the plan that we already have. Uh, which gets us at least nine fingers. For boat wreckage. I would much rather see us invest, if we're going to invest anything in this, in the. Uh, alternate plan as it's intended to be. Now, we've got the wave attenuation thing, which we're gonna have to, have to fix. At some point, because we can't even do the full build out on D dock, uh, until that is resolved. So. That being said, I'm in favor of us moving forward. I would much rather see us move forward with. That being said, I'm in favor of us moving forward. I would much rather see us move forward with the planned resolution, even if we have to phase it in. And do most of it, but not the entire length because the last thing we wanna do is put it out there and beat it up. Yes.
So I prefer, or would you like me to ask who would pick up that for a number for?
That would work. You need to be able to be.
Not not the full length. We can't go the full length because of the wave attenuation, but.
To work out.
But let's not. Yeah, at least nine fingers out. Yeah, one, two, three, four, five. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I mean, as many as eleven. Coming to here.
Just curious how long we are.
Yeah, I I can't tell from the scale.
Have that now if we have sixteen. That we use.
They're about as wide as that cap. So they are shorter. So so I don't know what your capacity is. But I don't know why we're continuing to move forward with the old plan when we should move forward with the new. If we need to revise or ask them to revise, well, that's the last thing I wanna do is get the architect to get. Yes.
Right, but you know, now basically time is strict, you know, he he is. You say you build this particular dock to get it installed by June one.
Yeah.
Could he do what you're proposing, which is great?
Well, that was the initial ask, so I was surprised when it came back at the original config. So.
Because, you know, he's looking at June one, you know, maybe fifteen days later than opening of the marina. Um.
So we'll invest in something to replace it.
I I'm just.
Yeah, I know, I know, I I understand.
I understand what you're saying. The the one thing that I'll I'll pull into the conversation, if you all remember during that special session meeting, we talked about. Of the lost revenue, if we didn't do what we did with this dock twisting and utilizing it for this one, uh, year. With the slip reduction that we would experience, the equal out to be, um, right around fifty thousand dollars, wasn't it? Fifty to sixty thousand dollars. And lost revenue, just this summer alone, if we didn't do what we did.
I thought it was that high, but.
Well, it would have been half of what because. We would have been losing, they would have lost like these two. They were just gonna make a U.
I think you guys came up to like seven thousand, but Mark was in that meeting and Mark showed additional counts. Or slips that we weren't equating in that thirty seven thousand. From estimate, I remember and I hadn't notated on that paperwork. And I'm not saying like, well. The prevented loss revenue now basically pays for this. There's a gap there, but it's, there's, there is no. Win-win decision here. This, I wish it would, it would be great to have a win-win decision for one time in four years.
We'd like that, wouldn't we?
But it's not gonna happen, so.
There, I have a question, maybe to you. Um, eh, right now, we're gonna, we're already looking at losing two weeks. Based on this particular design and I I guess. One question would be, we could authorize funding to not exceed this amount. For this design or for him to bring forward, um. Whatever seventy seven thousand would build.
Of this.
To towards the original plan.
Yep.
The original phase three.
Yeah, you know, I mean, just like it was mentioned and Bob, thank you very much for this is that we shall be cut the D D short and then. Because of the wave attenuators and and you're raising a great, great point, so. So can we, can we, can we authorize the money and then?
We probably have to bring in Arvin Marsh too, because Arvin Marsh was the ones that spoke to, don't move forward around step three at this stage. Until you do that attenuators first, yes. And so if you're gonna go down this route, you're really gonna pick your hand. And I I'm not saying this because I want it to go this way. I'm just, I'm being sensitive to all parts of the ninety different conversations that are out there. F D S is the builder, they're great, but they're not the engineers and they're not the ones that can 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 confirm our attenuators. Will protect that type of build out.
How about we revise the question to the F D S is to. Letting us, giving us a heads up, if you will, what we could do. To adapt this design to make it more favorable for flipping.
For the plan.
Being able to be utilized.
Flexibility in future.
For alternate three.
That would be ideal.
Okay.
But I I I don't wanna lose anymore.
I hate to invest that money in and not be able to use it, so.
You know.
It would be, it could be helpful to if if you give us an answer in two weeks, if we could have an answer, that would be taken. If that wouldn't, well, the back pass to June first, yeah, like we can. Give us a piece.
Does he need an authorization to proceed or did he like now in order to be booked for this date?
Um, he does already have work on for spring.
We have to take action on this tonight.
Okay.
I mean, if we don't, we're just.
I agree, I mean.
We're gambling. I gamble that it hasn't worked once in four years for me, so.
Camps haven't worked.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion to proceed with, um. The resolution for authorizing city manager deputy, uh, or assistant clerk, city clerk. To issue the contract to F D S for seventy seven thousand four hundred dollars. To the design as presented.
Or further discussion? Roll call please, Jessica.
Moody.
Uh.
Richard.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nemecheck.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Moving on nine D. We got one, two, three, four, five items left. Take it away, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They need any submission. Uh, I'll go ahead and keep this kind of sweet and short. I'm recommending we purchase a Kubota zero turn tractor for the D P W department that is already in budget. And this kind of spells out kind of the whole process. This is purchased through Sourcewell, best price we're gonna get. As you can see, they're knocking off about six grand. Uh, because we're part of Sourcewell, we're a municipality, no taxes, it's coming with the bagger. We have two of these already, technically three of these already, one of them we barely ever use, but that one will be rotated out and then we'll have two. Newer tractors that wanted to buy one for a long time, so that's what I'm here.
Thank you, Doug.
Yep.
Public comment, questions, concerns? Closing public comment, going to the board, starting with Commissioner Moody, moving on down.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, Doug. I I guess my only question is, it's a pretty standard tractor, since there was. This was the only one.
Uh, yes, because we use Sourcewell, we purchased these Kubotas through Ginup Sales, basically. Service to us for these tractors and then a lot of other apartment. So this is the best price we're gonna get, that's why they're one flip.
Finally. Uh, Doug, I'm in support, just curious as a cat, old mower, being sold, given away, auction up.
Uh, it's gonna be, uh, locally bid off to whoever wants it here within the department locally. If there's, there's interest in it, so. Sign an auction site, then that's what's been done in the past.
Perfect.
That's the plan. We, we were given a price by Ginup Sales. We know we're gonna get that that and more, so potentially.
Perfect, so you'll get exceeding the trade in value then, all right, that's what I was wondering. And then, uh, in regards to, I know it's budgeted, but can you? I went back and looked at, I, in the C I P, specifically, what was the dollar amount budgeted for the Kubota?
Uh, well north of this, about forty thousand.
Forty, that's what I thought, Doug.
Correct.
All right, I'm in full support. Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Lassiter.
Sound good, thanks.
Commissioner Farrell.
I'm good.
Um, I'll make the recommendation.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Good old me, warranty?
Uh, I believe two years. Probably somewhere on here.
I looked and I missed it. Talks about what the prices are, but I don't see in their document of their quote.
It's two years at half the back, but it's either one or two years.
Yeah, I'd like to see it written.
Okay.
On these. Um, I don't wanna hold this up for the night, but I I want the executed document to speak to the warranty period. Thanks.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that the city commission approve the purchase of Kubota zero turn tractor from Ginup Sales. And it mountain out to exceed twenty two thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and thirteen cents and authorize city manager, city clerk treasurer to execute the necessary documents.
Support.
Further discussion? Roll call please, Jessica.
Richard.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nemecheck.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Doug.
Nine F, here we go. Uh, for the past several years, city here and Boyne City has borrowed or rented trench boxes as. From local contractors to meet the needs for various projects. Trench boxes come in a variety of shapes and materials and in our experience, effective trench boxes. Should be one user friendly and also appropriately sized for the municipal jobs that they are required to be used on, um, not oversized, not unyielding. City staff have discussed the ve- discussed the benefits of acquiring a trench box for the city use instead of continuing to borrow or rent them. Ownership would improve job site safety, increase scheduling flexibility and reduce the area that needs to be excavated and properly so, especially for smaller constrained sites. I have included in the budget, purchase of a builder box, efficiency production, uh, as who makes these builder boxes that are located in Mason, Michigan. The lower quotes from some varieties of trench boxes with only the third having included the. That shipping cost will be five hundred seventy five. I was given that recently by, um, folks at E P I down in Mason. Um, that builder box system, there's some literature here as well, so you can kind of see what it is, how it works. Uh, the steel boxes weigh around five thousand pounds, whereas the builder boxes are aluminum, this was the one, this particular one would come in around fifteen hundred and fifty pounds. And is modular, meaning you can build it as you need in the field. It's very easy to use, basically. And the efficiency production model's benefit goes beyond just weight, obviously because of the design, the freight is estimated at five seventy five to get the box shipped here to Boyne City. And that can be saved if we were to make arrangements to pick this up in Mason, Michigan. Uh, the purchase is one that will be split between water and sewer into these two accounts that are listed. And as my recommendation, that the city commission approved the purchase of a trench box on efficiency production. Or amount not to exceed ten thousand seven fifty six eighty five, that's with the shipping, plus the five hundred and seventy five that we picked it up.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
Public comment, questions, concerns? Already going to the board, starting with myself and continuing to move down. I'm in full support. This is also a safety aspect. I understand the safety measure that is intended for as well. Um. How much do you budget? I know we budgeted for it. I just wanna make sure that we're under that.
Uh, I came between twelve and fourteen thousand with some of the prices I was giving back in October, November. Um, at that point, I was determining whether I should include D P W as part of, you know, a a contribution to this, if you will. D V W would use it as well. Uh, in this current agenda, not I don't have D P W listed, I could include them. Or say twenty percent of the cost and then split it the other two ways if we're having a waste fire.
Okay, all righty, thanks, sir.
Yep.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Yeah, Doug, have you used this particular?
Yes, I'm familiar with these. Uh, used to be an operator myself. Yes.
I'm good, thanks. Commissioner Farrell.
I'm good.
Okay.
This is available on the state plan or the state purchasing.
No, no, this is kind of a private type thing, but we can't do Sourcewell.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Pritchard.
Safety issue, gotta have it. I would, I'm gonna assume the R O I is there, the return on investment. Um, as opposed to our rentals, um, I'm quite astounded that aluminum's got. To replace iron, but I'm gonna trust you on that.
It absolutely does. Uh, it's tried, tested, tried and true, they're, they're making them over twenty years, right in Mason, Michigan. One of the cities that I cut my teeth in when I actually was an operator in the whole.
Is there any any complexity to learn how to use the modularity of it?
Not at all, super user friendly. That's why I highly recommend it. I'm shocked that the city doesn't have one yet.
Thanks.
Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, that was, Miss Annie asked my only question. They're just, you know, what, you know, the R O I, what, what does it cost us to borrow them or rent them in the past, but. Um.
I'll make a motion that the city commission approve the purchase of a trench box from efficiency production for an amount not to exceed ten thousand seven hundred fifty six dollars and eighty five cents. And authorize city manager, clerk, treasurer to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Ready, further discussion? Roll call please, Jessica.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nemecheck.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Right.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, um, so we got a memo here from Jessica. We have to come up with a date and time. Looks like Jessica pulled the commission, the date is July twenty second, time is four P M. Um. This is gonna be scheduled the same day as the twelve P M city commission meeting. Any public comment, questions, concerns on agenda item nine G?
Will that be the?
You have to come to the podium, state your name and address, sorry, Jim. Otherwise, someone's gonna yell at me on Facebook, they don't hear you.
Jim Baumann, eleven nineteen West Street. I just inquiring whether this will be a public meeting. I know certain parts of this city manager hiring can be public, but other parts can be not. Do you know if this will?
Yes, this will be a public meeting.
Okay.
I anticipated to start as a public. We'll go into.
But you can still come. Any other public comment, questions, concerns? All right, going to the board for deliberation, starting with Commissioner Lassiter.
Doug, thanks for reaching out, for getting a good schedule on this, I'm good with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrell.
I'm good with the date as well.
Commissioner Pritchard.
Support.
Uh, Commissioner Moody.
Yep, good one, Dave. Thank you, Jess.
I'm in full support, so I'll just make the recommended, the city commission approved scheduling a special work session on Tuesday, July twenty second, twenty twenty five. At four P M to review the city manager applicants with pivot executive recruiter James Free.
I do have a question. Will we have in advance of that their preliminary betting?
I don't know. Okay. I'm supporting the motion. Or, well, there is, that's all I, I don't say.
I did, I'm sorry.
Roll call whenever you get a second, Jessica.
Um, Nemecheck.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody. Richard.
Hi.
Lassiter. Motion's carried.
All righty, moving on to good of the order. I had a list of a few things, but I'm skipping it. I can, I said another day, it's still. Anyone else have anything from good of the order?
I had one thing.
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, I'd just like to put a shout out to the Fourth of July committee, its chair, Jessica White, countless volunteers and city staff. That made, um, the event, July fourth event, a spectacular event in town again. So, uh, kudos to all those involved.
Yes.
And if I miss somebody, I'm sorry.
Here. Thank you for that, absolutely, and also to the police department and everyone, I mean, thank you guys, appreciate it. Um, anyone else have anything to go to the order?
Not sure how we're gonna proceed with it, but the, as you were, where through all the brouhaha about. Chairs and chair placement and whether or not we want, um. Zoning to begin taking a look at whether we need to do in ordinance. And just let it ride. I don't care one way or another, there was just a lot of room about it. Yes.
I, you can say doing an ordinance in Paul or delivering. Uh, a mile and a half worth of people stop stop, I love. Time of year.
Okay, I'm good with that.
You might check with the harbor, they say you have the rules about that, can't put anything out. Serve time by seven A M, uh. Rather than re-rent the system.
Yeah, well, Traverse City's.
Maybe my moment, just state your address for the record, please.
Oh, thank you.
I think it's Harry, it happens to the best of us at ten thirty.
That's it.
All right, Jenna, I am eleven, next announcements, next regular city commission meeting is scheduled for. All right, Jenna, item eleven, next announcements, next regular city commission meeting is given for July twenty five at twelve P M. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Uh, baby, say hi.
Okay, sure, thank you very much.